Yes ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Color Guard presentation by Colonial Forge's High School, Army JRTC, and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sir, permission to present the colors.
Present the colors.
Thank you, sir. Colors, present. Arms. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors, order, arms.
Get what?
Right, face, forward, march.
We'd like to thank tonight's Color Guard cadets Casey Drummond, Sajay Swartz, Roberts Estrada Ramos, and Pinkum Bay for joining us from Colonial Forge High School's Army JRTC. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Chairwoman, I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda for tonight. I would like Staff Report 5.02 Elementary Class Size Enrollment Report to be moved to two weeks from now, our next meeting.
Okay.
I would also like to add to the amendment. The public citizen's comment will be limited to 66 minutes to those that signed in outside before the meeting. So that is 66, we'll round it up to 70 minutes.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with the item 5.02 Elementary Class Size Enrollment Report deferred to the next meeting and to limit the maximum amount of public comment to 70 minutes. We have a motion by Dr. Chase and second by Ms. Young. Dr. Chase, is that acceptable to you?
That's acceptable to me.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to awards and recognition. We have a proclamation. Dr. Chase, would you like to read this for us?
Yes.
Whereas school bullying is a significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas more than 20% of our nation's youth are estimated to be involved in bullying each year either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas bullying can happen on and off school grounds and can assume many forms including verbal, physical, and in cyberspace, and whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas the Virginia School Boards Association has developed a model policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County School Board that it hereby designates October 2018 as Bullying Prevention Month, and call this observance to the attention of all our county citizens.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to staff reports. Status report on the upcoming elementary school redistricting.
Okay, I just let you know that we have received, I believe, four RFPs. A committee has been established, will meet on Thursday to review it. We have our chief elementary executive director, Matt from planning, Nicole from technology, two elementary principals, and Mr. Haran will serve on that. What I would recommend to the board after we rank them and make a recommendation, that you go back and I'll, I have a paper copy for you, but obviously you could get it on Board Docs, to go back and look at the district organization philosophy and goals as it relates to school attendance areas. Have set a criteria for prioritizing your redistricting, and I think we should hold a work session to make sure these are still your priorities. And obviously, we want you to meet with whoever gets the contract to do the redistricting, and make it clear what your expectations are, and I think this would be a start for good conversation.
If I could just make a quick note on that one, Mr. Haran, I don't know where you are, there you are. We discussed preemptive redistricting, if those words can be also put in somewhere in the criteria for the contractor.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
And if I, my comment also falls, this board who has been through redistricting before, we know we have, what, 17 characteristic, or, sorry.
Elementary schools.
Well, we have 17 actually things for us to look at in a redistricting. I believe that if we do look at this RFP and it says ensuring compliance with established goals, I want to make sure that we as the board are establishing those goals or are priorities within those, so I believe, Dr. Kizner, that's sort of, I think what you were saying is-
Yeah, that's right.
There's a lot in here that I think that's actually very critical, but I also think it's something that we should make sure, even if done in a work session, which I believe the debate and comment has to be, that we do give the public some opportunity to come and opine, particularly with respect to, I hate using the word priority after what we just talked about back there, but how are we going to organize these goals, because meeting all 17, we've known can't happen, so I just want to make sure that we allow the public the opportunity to opine on that piece.
Dr. Kizner, do you have a timeframe that you need us to meet to have that discussion?
Well, the draft timeline had us trying to have the RFP approved on the 23rd. We're going to bring that forward to you, to the board on whom we select, and I would recommend that you take that time, if you have, before the meeting, to meet the contractor and ask any questions and interact with that. So to set those goals in early November would be our goal.
Ms. Hall, can you try to find a date that everyone is available? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haran. All right, before we begin the citizen comment period, I'm going to ask Dr. Kizner to address the board and the public?
I'd like to read a statement that I wrote. Stafford County Public Schools does not comment on individual student incidents in order to avoid divulging confidential information. However, I would like to make some brief remarks on a matter that I know is important to many people in the audience tonight, and those watching on TV, as well as the school board, and me. Although there has been some inaccurate information shared both on social media and the general media, there is some relevant information that I feel obligated to share. A recent lockdown drill at one of our schools should have been handled differently. Although I believe there was no malicious intent by any of our staff members, we must ensure that all of our practices and procedures are built on a foundation of equity, dignity, and respect for all children, and that the safety of everyone in our school system is never compromised. We did not live up to my unwavering expectation that every child and adult, regardless of race, religion, color, disability, gender, and sexual orientation, is treated with respect and dignity, and for that I apologize to the student, the family, and the Stafford community. This unfortunate situation provides an opportunity for the community to work together and for the school system to reevaluate all of its safety and equity procedures. In fairness to the staff involved, I am not sure they were given clear directions and expectations during this lockdown drill. In retrospect, they realize it could have been handled more improperly, and we are all committed to making that happen. I will be reaching out to the LGBTQ committee, community, and other stakeholders to be part of the change process, coupled with our Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity Committee that has its next meeting this month. We will plan a series of appropriate professional development programs, review our procedures, and if necessary, make policy recommendations to our school board. I conclude by saying that as a superintendent, I have unwavering belief that is followed by action, and that everyone, both adults and children, are treated with respect, fairness, and dignity. I thank those who have sent emails with suggestions to help us improve, and I also ask those who have sent attacking emails to various staff members to please stop. It is not helpful. I also know most of the emails and postings are not coming from people in Stafford or even our local region. I am confident that working together, we will make our school system and community a more welcoming place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Before we begin the public comment, Mr. McCosker, will you read our information, please?
Public comment. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation of the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. The public comment period this evening will be limited to 70 minutes. It actually may go up to 72 based on the 24 speakers who have signed up. So when your name is called, please come forward. I'll read several in a row if you want to line up. We will need you to stop when the red light goes on. Missy, is there a way to move that so they can see the lights? It was sort of hidden under there, so that we can give everyone who signed up the opportunity to speak this evening.
Can you move the computer a little bit?
Yeah. Can you see that from the front? I mean, there's a lot, we can see the red light, but who's there? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Hall. All right, the first speaker is, the first speaker is Marie Gossi, followed by Sam Hampton, and third will be Jackson Sheriff Parker.
Madam Chair, members of the school board. I'm Marie Gossi. My home address is 246 Whitson's Run, Stafford, Virginia, and I am the chair of the Stafford County Electoral Board. In light of the upcoming November 6 election, I am here tonight to thank the Stafford County Public Schools for their amazing continuing support. I want to especially highlight the 15 schools which serve as voting locations on Election Day, the high schools which encourage students turning 18 by the November election to register to vote, and not least, all the school staff who ensure safe and welcoming facilities enabling our citizens to vote. From our board to yours, a very sincere thank you for your school's partnership in the American election process. Thank you.
Sam Hampton, followed by Jackson Sheriff Parker. No, no Sam Hampton? Am I reading that right?
Hampton, Crampton, I'm just, something like that?
Some one is coming here.
Just to make sure we don't pass you by?
All right, Jackson Sheriff Parker, followed by Jackson Sheriff Parker would be Reverend Beth Huntsberry.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Sheriff Parker. My address is 1101 Potomac Drive, Stafford, Virginia. The purpose, I have no organizational affiliation. I'm just a resident. Good evening, county board members. Thank you for your service. Again, my name is Jackson Sheriff Parker. I've been a Virginia resident for over 10 years and a Stafford County resident for over six. At face value, what does a 52-year-old man know about being a transgender girl? You see, allegedly, I was supposed to be a girl too. Even my parents thought so, but back in the 60s, transgender did not exist, but neither did the internet, cable, TV, or social media. For 49 years, I struggled hard with it. Why was I born in the wrong body? Why couldn't I be who my heart and brain told me I was? During those 49 years, I went ahead and pretended to be someone I wasn't. I served in the military then as a federal law enforcement officer, where I'm still employed today, currently at headquarters in DC. Four days before my 50th birthday, I finally had the courage to change the course of my life. I transitioned from female to male. In doing so, I gave up my entire life's history. You won't find my name on any of the major accomplishments I achieved, and my birth certificate still shows I was born a female. The Department of Defense in the state of Virginia corrected my identification paperwork to show my name and gender as I present today. My goal here in speaking unionized is I hope I can change the stereotypes, bias, and fear that some of you may have of transgender persons in public bathrooms and locker rooms. For those of you who feel uncomfortable or afraid to share these facilities with transgender persons, I say, you already have. You've been doing it for years, you just didn't know it. Some of you shared the men's bathroom tonight with me before this meeting. It wasn't too long ago that we told children and adults which water fountains they could use with no more reasoning than simple bias and discrimination. It has come up again, although this time you're endangering a young girl's life by telling her she's expendable when it comes to protecting her in a case of emergency. There's no safe place for her in Stafford County schools. The only difference between that little girl and me is that you would have- The only difference between that little girl and me is that you would have directed me to the boys' locker room tonight in the event of a lockdown. Which locker room would you direct me to now? Thank you for your time.
If you could hold your clapping, that will help with the timing here. After Reverend Beth Huntsberry, Christian Peabody, followed by Cara Burford.
Thank you so much, friends, for giving me the opportunity to just speak really, really briefly. My name is Beth Huntsberry. I'm an interfaith minister, but more importantly, tonight, I'm a mom. I have a son in high school here in Stafford. He is gay. I'm also a fierce ally and supporter of the LGBTQ community. I've worked in this community for years. I'm speaking straight from my heart, no notes. When I saw the news, I felt like someone had punched me in the gut. Literally punched me in the guts. This is Stafford. It's not who we are. I want to speak from compassion, assuming my malice, because I don't believe any staff member meant to harm anyone. I do not believe that. I believe that this is an opportunity for powerful change and growth. Some statistics tell us that one in 33 American teens are transgender. One in 33 is a kid in every classroom. This is not going anywhere, and we have an obligation as leaders, as parents, as educators, and especially as clergy, and I love that we have so much clergy here, to protect our These kids need to know that they are safe at school. And when we do a lockdown drill, and we tell a child, and I know we didn't mean to tell this child this, I know this, but we did, that if someone comes in this school and starts shooting people, I'm sorry, you might not be as important as your friends, and we might not have a place for you, and we don't mean to do that, but this is a middle school little girl, and that's all she hears. Now, these kids are resilient. I know this because I know them. I don't know her, but I know these kids. And I hope she will take this, and she will powerfully move forward and use this, and she will heal. But friends, the crack will be there. She will remember. We have an opportunity to do that same thing, to powerfully move forward and change, and that means diversity training, inclusivity training, and compassion. Thank you so much.
After Cara Burford, Jeff Trigger.
To the members of the board, the superintendent, the educators of Stafford County Public Schools, those in attendance, and Missy, no one ever says hi to you, Missy. Hi, Missy. There is major concern. My name's Christian Peabody. I'm the president of the Stafford Education Association. I'm also the vice chair for Virginia Education Association's District Q. There is a major concern throughout Stafford County Public Schools regarding the clarity and equity of division-wide anti-discrimination policy and practice by and for both educators and students. For many of our own educators and students, their schools are the only safe haven they know, and if our educators and students don't feel their schools are safe for them, then what do they have? Rather than opportunities to thrive, their burden was survival on a daily basis. And sadly, this speaks immediately to the situation some of our educators and students endure daily, and it also speaks to the lost potential of empowerment our educators can offer our students. Yet it also speaks to the opportunity the division now can offer to help address and support this collective concern. And we are then presented with a singularly unique opportunity of establishing, implementing, and supporting universal safety measures through across-the-board anti-discrimination training, which can be fully delivered on a division-wide basis by the end of this academic year while being supported by drafted or revised policy within the next few months. And the Stafford Education Association is prepared to be that prime mover. We are currently engaged with local, state, and national-level advocacy bodies, associations, and organizations to bring subject matter, expert-driven plans and policies for implementation in concert with Stafford County Public Schools that allow us to immediately support educators and students pleading for salvation and begging for guidance. We need to break any perpetuation of a culture of silence regarding discriminating practices occurring within our school system through open and honest discussions, as uncomfortable as they may be, so we can see what's going well and we have a context and direction to target and amend what is not. S E wishes to serve as the broker for reconciliation of those concerns. If our educators feel protected, then our students will feel protected and advocated for as they grow and learn about themselves during a remarkably beautiful and pivotal time in their lives. Every educator is our educator, and every child is our child. Every student is our student, and it is our wish and our hope that S E have the distinct privilege of becoming that agent of change in partnership with this board and the division on behalf of the collective community. Thank you for your time. We look forward to providing any service we can to this board and everyone else.
My name is Cara Burford. I live at 11808 Camelot Way, Fredericksburg. I'm an educator with Stafford County Schools, S E A Vice President. I want everybody here to imagine one of the greatest joys in your life. Many of you probably are thinking about your children or a significant other. For many adults, their greatest joy would be their child. Oh, the joy they bring when they look into your eyes and you know they love you, or that moment they crawl into your bed and wake you up in the middle of the night. These connections should never end for parents. Now imagine never being able to have these moments again because you had to bury your child. This will end up being the worst day for a select few parents. I can speak from personal experience. This is not a day that any person or parent should have to go through in his or her life. However, it is a very possible chance to have another parent join this group if Stafford does not create policy that helps protect all students, no matter the race, gender, religion, or LGBTQ status. Many educators understand that this can easily become a true reality for parents, and they believe our children should be protected no matter how they identify themselves. This is because educators understand these children, and children can struggle with having their own voices heard. However, educators are not being made aware of any written guidelines, and they struggle with how to handle situations. Whether you agree with these issues or not, these are children. Until you suffer the loss of one of your own, you might not truly understand the magnitude of this situation. It is a fact that students and educators are not part of the majority, are being treated differently, and educators are left to their own to make possibly life-altering decisions. We need a policy to help ensure that educators feel safe to support our children. We need actual guidelines that do not allow administrators to break under pressure and neglect the well-being of children. We need policies that allow educators to support these students. We need training to help assist educators so they are able to understand how to handle issues that might arise. We do not want to be the district where parents, children, or educators have to suffer. It is up to this board to decide what is more important. Do you create real policy that only protects children but also educators that support these children? These educators are trying to prevent a loss. Do we want to be the district where it's acceptable to lose children, destroy educators, when all that is needed is training and policy? S E is willing to partner with the district to help create policies that will ensure that educators are provided the support they need to ensure that students are provided a safe learning environment. Thank you.
After Mr. Trigger, a Carol Medawar, followed by Leslie Cook.
My name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live at 518 Clint Lane. Tonight, I speak to you as an educator and a proud member of the Stafford Education Association and of Equality Stafford. Stafford County Public Schools has one of the fastest-growing populations in the Commonwealth, and with that growth has come an increase in diversity of the population. Unfortunately, our policies have not kept up with the changing population and is almost nonexistent when it comes to the LGBTQ populations within our students and staff. Quite frankly, I'm tired. I'm tired of not being able to openly support students if they have questions about themselves. I'm tired of students being afraid to be themselves. I'm tired of not being able to address these issues in a productive manner with fellow staff members because honestly, most do want to give equity to all of our students. I'm tired of people feeling excluded just because policy doesn't exist in support. Lastly, I'm tired of people worrying that they might get fired because they are caught in between doing the right thing and quote what the rules are. As educators, oftentimes, we end up being the mentor to students, especially those in unique situations, whether it be a lack of parental supervision, poverty, bullying, special education, or being a member of the LGBTQ community. According to the APA, suicide attempts among the LGBTQ student community are among the highest in the country when compared to other subgroups. And yet, studies show that just having one person show they care drops their chances of self-harm in half. Oftentimes, that responsibility falls on us, the educator. Tonight, we are taking our first step in righting our previous wrongs. As I speak, the Stafford Education Association and Equality Stafford are putting forth a deadline. All SCPS educators will have LGBTQ training by the end of the 2018-2019 school year. The training will be done by an independent third-party organization side by side. This training is not to shame our employees, but to empower them to make the right decisions when working with our LGBTQ students and staff. Simply stated, I'm tired of being tired.
My name is Carol Medawar, and I reside in the George Washington District. Welcome to Dr. Kizner. I imagine you must be wondering, what have I gotten myself into? Only one month into the job, and the news is full of negative stories involving Stafford County. Just some history, I stood here in 2015 regarding policy that school board was putting in place that allowed a student's gender to interfere with their safety. I don't blame the staff at the school because you are responsible for the policy discussion and the tone that this school system have set in place. I know that some of you were not on the board at that time, and certainly, Dr. Kizner, you were not with us then. Still, the pattern was the same. A long list of speakers stood here at the podium and pleaded with the board to set a policy that makes a student that is transgender feel safe at school. At that time, information was presented to you about students and what might happen if they are not supported by their school community. Many presented statistics about bullying and risk for suicide. At that point three years ago, we urged you to understand that this was a life and death discussion. The board decided to create a "separate but equal" policy, which history has told us is just another name for discrimination. You allowed many outside groups that promoted fear and divisiveness to manipulate you into thinking that there was a danger in doing the right thing by our students. You, as the policy leaders, are responsible for setting the tone for this division. You have the power to set policy, and you have the power to change that policy. I heard excuses in 2015 that you wanted to wait and see what happened in other parts of the state. Well, you were elected to protect the more than 26,000 students right here in Stafford County and protect them now. You can do better this time. If this had not been a drill, you may be responsible for an unspeakable tragedy. Many other students and staff across our schools are counting on you to set the tone at the top that Stafford County Public Schools are safe places and inclusive places. Not just physically safe, but a place that's also emotionally safe. In addition to a policy that addresses this specific safety concern and accesses to various places in the school, you must also address the inclusive climate, the professional development of staff, and create opportunities to educate our entire community. You set the tone. It's your action that results in the new stories that are created. We have practice drills for a reason, so that we can identify weaknesses and make changes. Thank goodness, it was a drill. Please don't miss the opportunity to learn from what happened and promote that growth mindset. We ask our students to learn from their mistakes and make changes and do better. I believe you now know better. Please show us you do better. In closing, I want to say these new stories do not represent the good things that are going on in Stafford. As a previous teacher here and a parent, I can speak firsthand that this is not what should be defining us. There are amazing things happening every day in our schools. Your previous decisions, the bickering, the politics, only make it harder to tell those positive stories. Stop the political football with our kids, get the tone at the top corrected, for only then will we have a better chance at changing the narrative in Stafford County. I will email you my remarks, and I welcome the opportunity to work with you on these policy changes. Thank you.
After Leslie Cook, Amy A., followed by Becky Reed.
No iPads could keep getting bigger, but they have. All right. Hello, everybody. Thirty-four percent of LGBT—oh, I'm sorry. I'm Leslie Cook, and I'm on J. Mark Court in Stafford County. And I'm here as a mom and as a member of Equality Stafford. Thirty-four percent of LGBT kids are bullied on school property every year. That's a nationwide statistic. LGBT kids are 140% more likely than straight peers to not attend school at least one day per month because they're afraid they might be physically harmed in their school. 140% more, which is a number I can't fathom. Forty-one point five percent of trans adolescents will attempt suicide during their teen years. Half in our schools in our state. That number increases to 54% in adulthood. Fifty-four percent. For kids that have openly supportive teachers at school, that risk is cut in half, regardless of whether their parents support them or not. When they can go to school and know that they're safe and know that they're good, and there's overt policies to support that, the risk of suicide drops. That's how important you all are. Students in schools with adequate anti-discrimination policies and inclusive teacher training and guidance experience far less depression, reduced rates of suicide, better school attendance, and better grades. And that goes for all students. So schools with those policies see a jump in academic performance in school attendance and lower depression rates for all students, regardless of LGBT status. At least 13 other states have already enacted inclusive policies and detailed guidance on how to support LGBT students in schools. These trainings are most often free. Some are not free, but the not-free ones are cheap. They are easily implemented, and they are sustainable. They increase graduation rates, test scores, overall mental health outcomes for all students. We have an opportunity right now in Stafford. We have a huge opportunity in Stafford. We have a chance to lead on this issue, not follow. Don't miss this opportunity. Our kids need you.
Is Amy A. here? No. Ms. Reed, you're next, then.
Ms. Reed?
Following Ms. Reed will be Pam Lightfoot.
Good evening, staff and school board members. About 40 years ago, I was sitting where Dr. Chase is sitting. I was a member of the school board from Falmouth District. I was here in 2015 when we were talking about a transgender child. And at the end of that, I thought there would be policy changes, and I hope that one of the changes would, or many of the changes, would make transgender children feel more safe and more comfortable. That does not seem to have happened. With the lockdown, I would think we would be directing children to the safest place we knew to send them, but evidently, we did not include all the children. I believe that you are committed to making some changes with this, and I hope that you do because I know Stafford can do better than we have done in the past in this area. Thank you.
After Pam Lightfoot, Suzanne Richmond, followed by Reverend Leonia.
Good evening, board of—school board and the new superintendent. Nice to see everybody here tonight. I am Pam Lightfoot. I live at 17 Sarrington Court in Stafford in the Park Ridge subdivision. I'm not going to be as eloquent as a lot of other citizens here. My children are not trans, but it's—when I saw the news in Yahoo, I was just astounded. My children are not trans, but it's—when I saw the news in Yahoo, I was just astounded. And it's odd that October is Bullying Prevention Month, because I believe what happened to that poor child is a case of bullying, frankly, to have ostracized her from the other children. As you know, probably, we've had publicity, not on the school board level, but on the county level, being the laughingstock of the nation regarding the Confederate flag on '95. So, it seems every time—you know, it's not like you're just airing very laundry in Stafford to the citizens. Everybody in the country is watching, and why shouldn't they be? You know, military want to move here. If they PCS here or something, people might want to do something. They go, boy, Stafford is really—you know, they look up the big news of Stafford, and it's the flag, and it's this kind of incident. So, you know, one part of the story I'd read was the assumption that they had to separate the trans student for everybody else's safety, and that was very disturbing. It's basically—the ergo, there's an assumption that trans students attack others, which obviously is incorrect. And I think that, again, the training that's been suggested—I wasn't here in 2015, but if the board was notified or suggested that policies be put in place, and they haven't been, then it's time to do that now. And if the members of this board don't feel up to it, then perhaps we need to look at upcoming elections for people who actually want to take action instead of going on now, you know, a long time for things that damage our children. So, again—it's one of these things where any citizen, regardless of—I'm—you know, again, my kids aren't involved, but for just equitable sake, I—as most of these other citizens—hope that the board does the right thing and establish policy to make sure students and faculty of whatever sexual orientation they have are safe in any situation. Thank you very much.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Kizner. My name's Suzanne Richmond. I'm a local pediatrician. I've been a pediatrician for 30 years, and I've taken care of Stafford County children for the past 20 years. It's an extraordinary privilege to help parents build strong and healthy families. Over the years, I've learned a lot from these families, and one of the most important things that I've learned is how much we all have in common. Babies to teenagers, children make us laugh, cry, and fill our hearts with love. It doesn't matter what race, sexual orientation, religion, or beliefs you have. Parents love their children, and those children need our love, kindness, and guidance to thrive in this world. It's a universal truth. I've had many LGBTQ kids in my practice over the years. It's hard to be a child and to figure out who you are in this world. It's even harder if who you are doesn't fit easily into society's preconceived norms. It takes incredible courage to stand up for who you are when others may bully or ridicule you. One word, a friend, a kindness, or a bully can change your life. LGBTQ students are nearly twice as likely to be called names, verbally harassed, or physically assaulted at school compared to their heterosexual peers. LGBT adolescents are more than three times as likely to attempt suicide as heterosexual peers. Transsexual youth are nearly six times as likely to attempt suicide as heterosexual peers. This is a heartbreaking problem. So, what can we do? Throughout history, people are most easily victimized when they are perceived as other or when it seems okay to treat them differently. When the school system unequivocally states that all are respected and have value, when it puts into policy that discrimination due to sexual orientation or gender identification is also unacceptable and will not be tolerated, that is when we begin to make it better. We can make it clear that everyone has value and a place in our community. We can teach our staff and children that we are stronger when we embrace our differences and work together. Then no child will be left to sit alone, humiliated by the actions of school staff in a hallway separated from their peers ever again. Thank you.
The next speaker is Reverend Leonida, and followed by Nate Everts and Kenya Wallish.
Hi, Aldwyn. My name is Reverend Leonina. I am here to speak about the same issue, and I won't give you all my address for security purposes. I lived in this area for 20 years. I'm a member of Eyeside FXBG, Southerners on New Ground, and I do language justice interpretation for the Virginia Anti-Violence Project. And I come here in solidarity with this child as a trans person myself and to lend help with their family as a parent of a trans child myself. One of parents' biggest nightmares has become true for this family, that their precious child is mocked, left to feel unsafe in the place where children should feel the safest. And I say that with a heavy heart as I watch my own child goes to school every day, not knowing that this could be the last time that I see them, because we all watch the news. No one feels safe in schools anymore. With this much violence being perpetrated against our delicate children from all fronts, these new threats and stressors bring a lot of anxiety to young minds. These active shooter drills bring that, too. You can talk to children, and they will tell you how affected they are to pretend like a bad person is coming into their school to hurt us. These are the words of my five-year-old child. I doubt that the staff here is trauma-informed enough to be able to detect and help children who are responding unwell to drills, and that they understand that this goes beyond the clear transphobia in this issue. I say that because it's obvious by the staff actions that they do not care about the safety of a student or to think that they can choose—or they think that they can choose which child to care for. Their actions said to this child and to all of us here that this life—that their life isn't safe in their care, that they would rather argue about building facility usage, gender issues, which they're clearly ignorant and untrained to do, and a child's anatomy, which to me is very disturbing in its own right, to be sure—and then to be sure that this child is safe. In my line of work, I have been to schools that have the proper training to treat and value all people with dignity and respect from a joint young age. Middle school is hard enough for a child without transphobia. When teachers choose to act violently towards students, they are saying to the group that this is allowed, this is okay. This cannot be tolerated with people that work with children. At minimum, staff needs to be trained to do better, and nothing less than all that the family asks for and this community is asking for will be given in order to have restorative justice. Thank you.
Hi. I live in Stafford County, and I would like to speak about LGBTQ issues. So, I was here last year, and I spoke about bathroom issues, and I heard that nothing has changed, so I'm back. Now, last time, I brushed over this lightly, but safety is a big issue. LGBTQ kids are targeted for bullying all the time, and it's a big problem. Bullying isn't dealt with effectively. Teachers and administrators just say, stop that, and that's not okay, but they rarely do anything that works. I should know. It took multiple attempts from myself, meeting with teachers, and my mother coming to school on several occasions before my bully stopped. I'm lucky it didn't come to physical violence, because too often it does. When it comes to LGBTQ kids, they have it worse. I don't have to worry about policies protecting me, but LGBTQ kids do. Stafford County Public Schools' policies don't protect them. LGBTQ kids should get the same protection others do. Now, an incident occurred recently during a lockdown drill. I'm sure you know what happened, so I'll spare you the details. I want to say, I don't think it's the teachers' fault. They're scared of the backlash they might get, especially without support. They shouldn't hesitate to put any student in any safe place, regardless of the space being labeled boy or girl, if shooters coming down the hall. Policies need to be changed, and training needs to occur so that doesn't happen again. I hope to see policies changed to meet these needs. Thank you for your time.
After Kenya Wallach, Joni Wilson, followed by Jane Ellen Teller.
Good evening. My name is Kenya Wallach. I am a parent. I live in the Falmouth District, and I'm a parent of three wonderful and amazing children. They are both—all three of them are biracial, because they're all mine. They're biracial, and they're Jewish. They're proud descendants of enslaved Africans, and they're proud descendants of survivors of the Holocaust. Two years ago, my daughter—my eldest daughter, who's currently in eighth grade now, she stood before you guys, and she talked to you guys about two issues. One was about dress code, and she greatly appreciates the fact that you guys did take that seriously and did change that. The second was about diversity and the need for this school district to think about and really engage in conversations surrounding diversity due to the treatment that she had received in sixth grade and prior to that by adults and others within this school system. In order for you, as a body, to really work to try to end issues of diversity within our school system, we must model that behavior from the top all the way down to the last person in these buildings. That means—from my standpoint—that means that no one should be allowed to have these views—not views—I wouldn't say views. I don't have anything written down, but I would say, no one should be willfully discriminatory against another group of people, regardless of what they look like, no matter where they're from, anything. I do not care. They should not. And so, I ask you politely to please take a look at who you have employed within these schools—in this school system, all the way through. And if they have the likelihood—if they are willing to discriminate against another child or adult, teacher, or whomever, train them properly, send them on their way. However, if they continue on that path, please get rid of them, because my children deserve better. I do not want tolerance of my children because of their brown skin and the fact that we—my children learn Hebrew, and that we go to synagogue, and we don't go to church. I don't want tolerance. I don't care about tolerance. And this child that we are talking about today, she doesn't deserve tolerance. Tolerance is not acceptable. I don't want you to tolerate me, nor my children, or any other child within this school system. I don't want there to be a principal, a teacher, or an administrator in central office to tolerate my children or any child. You should accept them for who they are, how they were born, how they accept themselves, how they see themselves. That is it. You don't—not you as in—you individually, but you as in this entire society does not dictate anything to these children or to these parents. Thank you.
My name's Joni Wilson. I live at 609 Stewart Street in Fredericksburg, Virginia. I'm going to read a statement that was given to me by a family member. It was written by the student that was involved in the incident at school lockdown. Dear board members, I am the student who was involved in the school lockdown on September 28th, and I am also the student who was banned from the girls' bathroom when I was just 10 years old. Now, four years later, I'm still having to deal with being separated and being treated like an outcast. What happened that day was the most humiliating and embarrassing thing I have ever dealt with. I had to have teachers debate my safety when it is just common sense. They kept telling me if it was a real lockdown, they would just, quote, "Just shove you in the safest place." If we were practicing our safety, why was I first made to sit in the gym with a teacher, then later sit in the hallway of the locker room facing a wall, alone, by the door? The door in which, if there was someone armed in my school, I would have been the first one gone. I felt like an afterthought. If the whole thing wasn't bad enough, the embarrassment caused me to have a panic attack in front of everyone. I do want to thank the only coach that day who apologized and told me what was done was wrong and that she was on my side. This wasn't the teacher's fault. They are doing what they've been told to do. Blame is pointless now. I want to stop being treated like an afterthought. I want you to stop treating me like I am a predator. It is time for you to fix this. Thank you.
After Ms. Teller, Marvin Sterns, followed by Brandy Cork.
Hello. I'm Jane Ellen Teller. I live at 32 Pawnee Drive in Fredericksburg, but I have five children who went all the way through Stafford County schools many years ago. I came here very angry, and I have a very angry thing that I wrote. But my anger is a bit diffused because of your apology, and I appreciate that. And I'm assuming, hoping, that that speaks for everyone here. I can't imagine, really, that it wouldn't, but Stafford County has, you know, done some things in the past. So, I'm just going to not read that. But I would like to speak directly to what I think is the root problem here. I know that, you know, training is important, but I think the policy of the bathroom separation is the root cause of this "we" and "they" situation. This—the trans children who are forced to go to the bathroom of their birth certificate? Is that the way it's defined? Right? I think that is the root of the problem. And when you force a boy—who someone who identifies as a boy—to go to a girl's bathroom or the family bathroom, you're making a separation there that causes this policy of not being accepted. So, I think this bathroom policy should be looked at again, and it's very detrimental. I happen to have a—my daughter and her family live in Massachusetts, and she—my daughter has a 10-year-old and a six-year-old, and I just spent last week with them. And this six-year-old is a fully transitioned trans boy. He calls himself Hank. That was not the name he was born with, but by age four and a half to five, he transitioned, and he has not met any resistance at all. He went to nursery school, he went to kindergarten, and now he's in the first grade, and people there don't know him by anything but a boy. He's a boy. When I was there, we had a little conversation about, well, you know, his parents— well, you know, he, his parents were in Europe. And he said, "Oh, I think it'd be nice to live in, in France. That would be really, really nice. I'd like that." And I said, "Well, yeah, it's a good place, but just be sure you don't move to Virginia." And he said, "Why?" And I said, "Well, because they would make you go to the girls' bathroom." And he went, "Oh." That was, that was horrible to him. Thank you for your time.
Marvin Sterns, followed by Brandy Quirk.
Hello. My name is Marvin Sterns, and I live at 18 Peardton Place, Stafford, Virginia. I graduated from Stafford High School in 2017. I went to Stafford County Public Schools my entire life, and I am now a substitute teacher in autism classrooms here in Stafford County. When I was in high school, there was another tran, oh, I'm a trans boy. And in my high school, there was another trans boy. And he, he was like full-on, he had a beard, he had a mustache, he had, he was told that he could not use the boys' restroom. He was going to be given a pass to use the women's restroom. So me, not passing very well, knew that I didn't even have a chance of going to the men's restroom. So I went into the women's restroom a couple times, and several times I was asked by classmates, "Marvin, why are you in here? Boys aren't allowed in this restroom." I, if it weren't for my art teachers and the drama teachers at Stafford High School, the drama teachers allowed me to use the single-stall bathroom in the drama department, I can't imagine what it would be like for anyone who didn't have that. Because if I didn't have that, I would have been part of a statistic. I don't know why. I'm sorry. I don't know why I had to fight for my right to pee. I just want to go to the bathroom. I just, I just want to be a normal person. I'm not here to hurt anybody. I don't want to make anyone uncomfortable, but I just, I want to be treated as a normal person. And for the girl in middle school, middle school is, middle school is rough. More, even more rough than high school. And it's just hard to be a regular person in middle school. Nothing, nothing extraordinary about you, but being trans in middle school, or being LGBT, it must just be, is just terrible. So I just, from, from the support of my teachers, I didn't end up being a statistic. And it's because of those teachers. I was in the drama department, so I was there every day after school and on Saturdays. I was with my teachers every single day. And their support is what kept me going. And if, the teachers need to support us. The teachers need to be trained on how to accept us and how to treat us with respect. And it's extremely important because those are the people we spend the most time with. Those are the people that we need to accept us and to work with us. And that, we need it so badly. We just, we just want to be normal. We don't want to be singled out. I don't want to be singled out. I'm just me. Thank you.
After Ms. Quirk, Reverend Joshua Cole, followed by E. David Gent.
Good evening, Superintendent Kisner, School Board members. My name is Brandy Quirk. I live in the George Washington District. I haven't been in this exact building in 29 years. This is awesome. I've come like full circle. I went to middle school here, this is our library. I'm a proud alumni of Stafford Elementary Dolphins, Stafford Middle School Spartans, and North Stafford Wolverines. And now here I am. I've brought my family back. I'm raising a nine-year-old and a five-year-old. I'm also a proud daughter of a 31-year veteran of the Stafford County teachers. Superintendent Kisner, I had some questions already drafted as I was preparing to speak. And I think you've answered two of them. And I hope that there's follow-ups in the meeting minutes with, with the action items as the dates are identified. The first one is, "When is the first meeting to start discussion of what to do next?" And I think you did answer that with maybe some, some meetings that are going to be held. The second action item is, "When will drafting start to update policies to be all-inclusive?" However, sir, when you did speak, you said, "If necessary, make updates to policy." If necessary, sir? If you don't mind me asking, what qualifies as something necessary to update inclusive policies? And to include the appropriate training for all leaders involved? And caring for our children? Being social workers for our children? Being mothers for our children? Fathers, guardians for our children? Every single thing that my mom did for 31 years in this county? If you don't have an answer tonight for me, sir, then maybe, maybe there's a follow-up in another meeting that provides that answer. And if I can't attend that meeting, that there are meeting minutes that are then published to the public so that we can refer to those, and then move forward. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no blaming who's what, who's what's wise. It's about the future and those inclusive policies and training. I'm a proud citizen of Stafford. I left to go to college, I went to Brooklyn. I'm back here with my own family because I'm a proud citizen of Stafford County. Thank you.
Good evening. Not one preacher minute. Madam Chair, thank you. Dr. Kisner, welcome to Stafford. School Board members, thank you. My name is Joshua Cole. My home address is 1138 James Madison Circle in Fredericksburg under the Falmouth District. I don't really want to talk about differing beliefs and differing opinions, because we know we all have them. I'm a proud product of the Stafford County Public School System. Started at Falmouth Elementary, excuse me, the Head Start, Falmouth Elementary, Drew Middle School, South Stafford, then graduated to North Stafford in 2009. And the entire time I was here in Stafford County, we've always talked about how special we are, how individual we are, how unique we are, how peculiar we are. We were celebrating our individual differences and who we are. If I could offer just a faith perspective, the Bible tells us in a couple different passages, "For we are fearfully and wonderfully made; that greater is he that's in me than he that's in the world." We hear all these different passages of scripture that tells us to celebrate who we are. And then every day I wake up and I hear different stories coming out of Stafford County, from the school bus, to the Confederate flag, to the incident listed here. And then I wonder, what happened to what we were taught in Stafford County Public Schools? That you are to treat others as you would like to be treated? That we are to celebrate our differences because we are great? We are individual? But then I'm also reminded that when Jesus was talking to a group of crazy radicals, he told them, "What you do to the least of these, you do to me." So for every time someone is disenfranchised in Stafford County Public Schools, in my mind, Jesus is disenfranchised. Every time someone is obstructed against, Jesus is obstructed against. And so for this particular incident, Jesus was held outside and told that, "We don't know what to do with you. We're, we're trying to figure it out. Just, just give us a moment. We're trying to figure it out, but we don't know what to do with you, Jesus." And I want to remind you that as we move forward, everywhere else around us is moving forward. Fredericksburg City, Prince William County, and here we are in Stafford County, one of the wealthiest counties in the U.S. And we're still stuck in the 50s, in the 60s, in the 70s. And now it's time for us to catch up. I just want to remind you that you guys have the power. You guys have the authority. And for many of us, we voted for you. And we're relying on you to do what's right for our students. Remember, they are beautiful. They are individual. They are celebrated. Imagine if this was your child, how would you feel? That same anger, that same zeal you would put into it, put it into this decision. Because that's Jesus, that's your child. And we have to fight for everybody. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Thank you.
After Mr. Gent, Ben Litchfield and Jen Coolidge.
I appreciate your time this evening. My name is Dave Gent. I live in Spotsylvania County, but I'm a seventh-grade teacher here in Stafford County. I came here today for a few reasons. The first is I was recently reminded, at a faculty meeting no less, that if there's change you want to see in this county, it's not enough to just talk about it. You have to show up to these meetings and advocate for it. The second is I'm here because there's a lot of people at my school, and other schools, I'm sure, who are not comfortable to be their own voice. They want change, but because of who they are or the positions they hold, they lack the support in our schools. I showed what I wrote to several teachers, and they all said the same thing. "I hope you're ready for the backlash." They fear some kind of social reprisal for doing something like this. And I hope it's not true. But I'm afraid that it might be. When I spoke to students about this, that was one of the places that broke my heart. I've spent the past week talking to students about their experiences growing up as part of the LGBT community. Some wrote letters, others spoke to me directly. And I keep hearing the same things over and over. "I can't talk about it here," was in a letter from an asexual student. "It's not safe for me," from a non-binary student. "They'll treat me differently if they knew the truth," from a gay student. It's not the truth of the statements themselves that break my heart. We've known about bullying in the LGBT community for a long time. What broke my heart is that in most of those letters and statements, they weren't talking about the other students. They were talking about the staff, the faculty at the schools. We're the people that are supposed to be their role models, their guides through life. I teach English and social skills in equal measure. We want them to grow into confident, strong young adults who will be citizens of our community in the very near future. Training addresses that issue. Training makes sure that if teachers do not know what to do or what is expected of them, they at least know where to find out. We get trained in how to identify child abuse, mental health issues, bullying, because we recognize that those are risks to our students. Training saves lives. It can do the same here. The last issue is that when I asked these students what solutions they wanted to see, what they all said pretty much unanimously is what they needed was a space. A space where they could be themselves. A space where they could learn about themselves and how their lives are going to progress, to advocate for their own needs. Someone to help them learn about what was down the road for them. If training is for the staff, organizations like GSAs are for the students. Beyond providing leadership opportunities and extracurricular activities, these can provide straight students a chance to learn about their peers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Litchfield. I live in Falmouth District. I also happen to be chairman of the Stafford County Democratic Committee. And let me say, there is no distance, there is no separation between the Stafford Democrats and Equality Stafford on this issue. I'm addressing you tonight because of recent news reports detailing the treatment of a transgender student during a lockdown drill. This story has garnered national attention and is being widely shared over social media. It was recently shared by celebrity activist Alyssa Milano to her 3.43 million Twitter followers. Suffice it to say, this incident does not cast Stafford County Public Schools or our community in a good light. It is shameful, and we must do better, not only for this student, but for all LGBTQ students, all students. The United States Supreme Court once said that education is perhaps the most important function of state and local governments. It is required in the performance of our most basic public responsibilities, even service in the armed forces. It is the very foundation of good citizenship. Today, it is the principal instrument of awakening the child to cultural values in preparing him for later professional training and in helping him adjust normally to his environment. In these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if he is denied the opportunity for an education. Such an opportunity, where the state has undertaken to provide it, is a right which must be available to all on equal terms. That comes directly from the unanimous opinion in Brown versus Board of Education. In Virginia, we have a long way to go before we live up to the court's command of real equality in Brown. Glisten reports that 70% of LGBTQ students in Virginia face some form of verbal harassment as a result of their sexual orientation. 13% report physical assault. Just think about that, 13%. Over 50% report verbal harassment as a result of their gender expression, with 10% reporting physical assault. This includes harassment from staff. It should come as no surprise that when faced with these types of challenges, over 60% of LGBTQ students report feeling sad or hopeless for extended periods of time. Without supports in place, these students are at increased risks of committing suicide. For a moment, just think about what we are doing to these children on a human level. They expect us to stand for them as their parents and teachers, and instead, we deny them human dignity. It is cruel and wrong. LGBTQ students have just as much right as anyone else to receive a decent public school education. All that they ask for is to learn an environment that is inclusive and welcomes them. This treatment of this student is appalling. Stafford County has dabbled in transphobic policies for over three years now. It is a stain on our community, and I ask that it stop tonight, here and now. The school board needs to take proactive measures to support diversity and inclusion in our schools, including system-wide training and the creation of student alliances. Our LGBTQ students deserve no less. Thank you.
Well, I don't even know if I can follow that. All right. Well, my name is Jen Coolidge, and I live in Fredericksburg, Virginia. And I want to share a story with you all. I have a 35-year-old daughter. At 12 years old, we're driving home from somewhere, and she says to me, "Mom, I have something to tell you. And after I tell you this, you're not going to love me." And I said, "Sweetheart, there's nothing that you could do or say that would cause me to not love you. I love you no matter what." And she said, screwing up as much courage as her 12-year-old little body could muster, she said, "I'm gay." And I said, "Me too! I'm happy all the time." And she said, "Mom, I'm a lesbian." And I said, "Sweetheart..." She said, "I know you don't love me." And I said, "It doesn't matter what you are. You were made this way." That's where Lady Gaga got it, by the way. Anyway, with that being said, I watched my daughter suffer 20 years ago with going to school in Fairfax County and struggle with the abuse, and the bullying, and the physical abuse that she suffered, to the point that she wound up dropping out of school. And it has shaped her life to where she is now behind. She's still struggling. We have so much further to go. You know, there is a song in South Pacific, "You have to be taught to hate and fear. It has to be drummed in your dear little ear." And we need no, go no further than what we saw in Mississippi on that stage last week, with President of the United States calling out a woman who was sexually assaulted and berating her, mocking her. And behind him were parents and community leaders like yourselves who just sat silent and were like, "Yeah, that too." But there was one face behind President, oh, I'm not going to go there, Mr. Trump. Thank you. And it was a child. And he was watching everyone laugh in support of the mocking of Dr. Ford, who has yet to be able to return home because she's still receiving death threats. Children are watching what you all are doing. The eyes of the world are literally on Stafford again, like we're not dealing with the Confederate flag enough, you know? We're better, we need to do better. There is, there has to be equality. Thank you, Pam, I love you. But, thank you. We can do this. We can do this.
That brings our public comment period to an end for citizen comments. We are now at the board committee reports and member comments.
Madam Chair, can we have a five-minute point of privilege? Five-minute break?
I don't see any objection. We'll take five minutes promptly back here at 8:25.
I think they didn't hear it. So you need to refresh.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute break.
No, I think people think that the public comment is closed.
The public comment period is closed.
But I was late due to traffic. Is it possible for me to speak?
Well, we had a motion at the beginning of the meeting to limit the public comment period to the 22 people who had signed up, so.
I was late due to traffic.
What is your name? What's your name?
Samson Hampton.
Okay, after the five minutes.
Well, we're going to take the five minutes here. We have closed the public comment.
Okay.
We'll deal with that when we come back. Thank you.
Give us five minutes.
8:25. Then close the public citizen comment period and come back to the board for board committee reports and member comments. So Mr. Hampton.
Thank you for letting me speak. I apologize about being late. I was in traffic. But something to point out is that it might be nice to ask someone what pronouns they use. I used "they/them" rather than "him," but thank you. My name is Samson Hampton, and I understand I'm an outsider. I'm not from Stafford. I'm from Rhode Island. I am here because America has heard what is going on here in Stafford and we're outraged. I have with me letters from people from all across the country who are concerned about what's going on in Stafford. The treatment of trans children here needs to be addressed. There needs to be training. There needs to be professional development. I am an advocate and activist, and I have done trainings for over 10 years. It's been 10 years since I was in high school, and I would really like to think that things have changed since then, but apparently they haven't. And I am willing to do whatever it takes to make it so that the children that are in school today don't have to go through what I had to go through. So I am willing to connect you with whatever agencies that you need, whatever resources that you need, so that you can get the professional development that you need, not just teachers, the school nurses, the social workers. Everyone needs training. They need to understand what LGBT means. There's a lot of letters in there, and they have a lot of different definitions for them. So there's a lot that needs to be done. I've heard about the bathroom issues, and I don't belong in the women's room, that's for sure. But I'm wondering if your schools have gender-neutral bathrooms? Okay. That's something that you can work on to make students feel safe. Safety is a key thing for students and I think should be your number-one priority. And that apparently wasn't the case in this instance. Mental health is one of the hardest things for the LGBT community, and the only security net that students have is their school. And you guys need to be there for them. So I'm willing to help you get connected with national organizations who know how to write policies that are effective and save lives. I mean, save lives, because lives are at stake. So I have letters, I have copies of the letters for each of you, and I would just like to say that I don't want to speak to you guys right now. I want to speak to the students of Stafford. We hear you. We see you. You are beautiful, and we love you. Thank you.
That brings us to board committee reports and member comments. Do we have any board committee reports? Ms. Egan?
Ms. Hazard, do you want to talk a little bit about the CIP advisory since I was out of state?
Really, nothing to report, just the advisories.
They met, they had the organizational meeting, and we'll be meeting again monthly.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. The Finance and Budget Committee met on October 4th, and I want to thank Ms. Hazard for attending the meeting for Ms. Decatur. Staff presented possible solutions for modifying the 12-month employee work calendar so employees would be compensated for the correct number of days. It was the consensus of the committee to support staff's recommendation to add additional holidays to the 12-month employee calendar. We discussed the need for some mid-year staffing adjustments in finance, human resources, and the Northern Head Start Early Childhood Special Education Center. With the shorter summer this next year, additional staff are required to hire teachers and take care of payroll. I believe Dr. Kizner will be following up with the entire board on this item. We also received a FY '18 year-end budget update. The annual external audit is currently underway. We learned that our year-end balance was lower than is customary. This is because the state has pushed off certifying sales tax receipts until December. Staff expects about $1.5 million to arrive at the county in December, and that's it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
I have.
Oh, Ms. Young?
Yeah. So just that the advisory committees on Monday, the first day, they've met, and I think school board member, Ms. Egan, mentioned it. I tried to, so I thank everyone from coming out that night. There were quite a few people that came out, and the classes were filled, so I hope they continue to come out. I tried to go from one class to the other. I think I hit three. I hit the CTE, which is, I hit the Career Technology Education. I hit, I think, Technology Advisory Committee, Head Start, and Capital Improvement. So I tried to go, and they were very entertaining. I think the CTE, for example, they had a lot of individuals there that had impressive backgrounds and technical qualifications that I fully want to understand what they do so that we could use them for the future and try to figure out how we could kind of merge them in what we're trying to accomplish with CTE. In terms of Technology Advisory Committee, I believe that, you know, I've been one of the school board members, and Sarah, I think you also joined us in the past, but they want us to try to join them in some of these endeavors, that they go to the different schools to see what's there, so that we could understand, so that when we vote on technology, we understand what we're voting on. So they did invite us to come out. So I think we need to, you know, try to meet some of those meetings. That's all on the advisory committee. Are we coming back for?
Yes, we'll come back for comments. Any other committee reports? Ms. Hazard?
Just a quick update. We had approved the legislative priorities last week. I think I had said in sort of anticipation of being able to be included with the Board of Supervisors. I did attend their meeting, and it was good to see that several of our initiatives made it as what I would consider some of their top priorities. Talking about the VRS and waiver-for-vat for school protection officers. There was a very interesting discussion about the cost to compete, but one of the interesting ones is a recognition that we need to be working with the state because the average teacher salary nationally is like $60,483, if I can read my own handwriting. In Virginia, we are at $56,861, and the Board of Supervisors put that in as one of their lobbying positions. We were cautioned, of course, it is a biennial, but at least there's a real recognition with some numbers, and I believe there's a broader discussion. But I was at least encouraged that we have been at least successful in bringing that issue to light.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? No?
Just a quick update. Yeah, just a quick update on the Joint Working Schools Committee. That'll be on Monday, 22 October. I think we're over there. I'm going to double-check because I can't figure that out. We're over at the BOS. But this is an all-call for any topics that you want to email to Ms. Hall that you might want the Joint Working Committee to discuss. I think an update on school protection officers, that may be one of them, even though they went forward with the legislative, but just to say, hey, can you give us an update? And then we can bring that back to you all. But just any topics do you think you want to discuss with the Joint Working Schools? Please give it to Ms. Hall. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard, do you want to start us with? Oh, did you have anything, Ms. Decatur? No. Ms. Hazard, would you like to start us with board member comments?
I would love to defer, but come back to me. I'm sorry. Can someone else start?
Ms. Decatur.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for coming out tonight, guys. Thanks for your understanding, hopefully, and the fact that we did limit the time. But if you wanted to speak and you weren't signed up, I would personally invite you to come back. If there's an award for the person who cries the most when my term is over, I think I've won it, as of now. So I just, I had a lot of things to say, and I too felt comforted by Dr. Kizner's comments at the beginning. We made an error in judgment last week that has made news outlets nationwide. Last year, I sat up here and listened to your advocacy. I, along with Holly, promptly met with then-superintendent and gained support for the Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity Committee to be formed. I spent literal hours meeting with parents and stakeholders who wanted nothing more than education, compassion, and training. When that committee passed and was to be formed, I sat up here smiling at the specific parents who I felt I was forming it for. I was so excited to begin training, helping our teachers and staff become better prepared to educate and include all students. Unfortunately, we're here having this conversation again, but the time to have these conversations isn't now. It wasn't then. It was a long time ago. Ignoring it isn't making our children feel more safe or better educated, or our staff more understanding or compassionate. I can only look to myself as someone with an opportunity that not many people will have to sit in this seat. We provide the direction for everything that occurs in this county. And I'll just say that I would support the SEA and their deadline to begin these efforts. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard, how long did you want for your deferral?
I can go now. My comments that were in here somehow have disappeared, but most people know that I am not.
Did they come back? Are you still signed into mine?
No, I'm not Jamie anymore, even though I wish I could have given your comments. So I'll adopt them as mine. At the beginning of the meeting, our computers were switched, so she had mine and I had hers, so that's why we're laughing. I would like to always say to those who come, I appreciate you. I appreciate that you write to us. I appreciate you take the time. The best way for us to know and to hear things is to hear directly from you. As I have told many people in my district and other places, I don't take judicial notice, as I would have called it, by a random thing. Write to me specifically, then I can write back to you specifically, because there is a lot to be gained by dialogue. I believe one of the many things that we have learned in the last few minutes, we need... I believe one of the many things that we have learned in the last few minutes, we need this dialogue. And it does not appear right now. It is occurring. I believe some of us thought some things were put into place to start that dialogue, and perhaps they have not, judging by this evening, been there. But Dr. Kizner, who we have spoken with this week, thank you for coming and saying not only what you said, but to also lead this board in getting to the right place, wherever that may be. I appreciate those that you reached out to, and more importantly, the fact that you didn't wait. You reacted immediately, and for that, I am eternally grateful. I believe we need to move forward. I mean, we need to examine, and we need to have the dialogue. That's where we need to be. I can't promise you something tonight. If you are waiting for something from me tonight, I don't know what that is, but I know it needs to be better. That much I can say. Moving on to other topics, because there are many in our division, and I think that we have to look in general with, about a lot of our students. This is a particular segment, but we have a really broad and changing community. We need to be looking broadly across the board, even though things are, the things brought up tonight, we need to look at very, very broadly and not in a vacuum in one area. We need to mean, when we say "all," we need to mean "all." And I've said that before, and I hope, oops, we can move towards that. In that vein, I would also just like to thank so many people that have made, really, though by and large, the first month of school, a lot of moving pieces happen. I do want to thank our educators, and I know we have challenges within our division. I know transportation is one. We have other things, though, that come up. But the main way that we can make change, and the main way that we can make our voices heard, is to talk to each other, join together, and then talk to those who can also help us. Some of that resides here with the seven of us, but there are other areas, too, that don't just reside with us, that we, as leaders, can all band together to make change. Because I believe there are policies, not just in the school division, but in this county. We forget we are part of a county. Those policies may also need to be examined. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young? Defer? Well, this is a new one. Is it Ms. Egan? Do you want to defer or speak?
I will just keep it extremely brief. How about that? I just want to thank the VEA and the SEA for coming out and extending the offer to help, and I hope that you'll all get with Dr. Kizner and get involved in this, in the committee that we've got. And, Dr. Kizner, I hope that there's an existing member list for that committee, and I know that two people from that committee hadn't received notification that a meeting was scheduled. So if we could maybe find that list and send it out to all the members, that would be helpful. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Dr. Chase?
I just wanted to say that one of the things that has struck me since I've gotten on the board, I know we've heard some negative things about Stafford, but is the fact that so many members of the community really do care about the children of Stafford County. And I regularly get emails, whether it's about buses that are maybe polluting the insides of buses and being worried about children, or whether it's something like this incident with one of our students. So I'm very encouraged by the fact that so many people do reach out to let us know what's going on. And then, on another note, I just wanted to share with the board that last night I was at the PTO meeting for the CGS, Commonwealth Governor's School, and I was very encouraged that our new director has, across all four counties, looked at how students are selected or the application process for getting into this program. And they've modified it so that extracurricular activities are no longer part of the admission process. And this is important because for students who maybe have a single family, single-parent home, they may not be able to participate in as many activities, or there may not be the money for them to participate in all of those activities. So I'm very encouraged by this change, that it might make CGS more accessible to all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Mr. McCosker?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Chase, for the good work on that and the team. So first of all, thanks so much for all, everyone to come out tonight. It's not easy coming here. It's not easy getting up to the microphone and to talk about issues. And so I do appreciate that, and we do hear you. We do hear you. You know, after being in, you know, some of you won't like this, but after being in the military for 24 years as a retired Army guy, you know, we work together, no matter who we are, you know, despite what policy says, right? Because when the bullets are flying, you don't care who's to your left or your right. You just want to make sure that they take care of you, right? So policy is something that this board has, and I echo some of the comments from our board members here about, you know, policy is a piece, but we still have to make sure that that policy is getting down to the lowest level, and we need to make sure that our folks are doing the right thing by our students. Because I think everyone up here is a parent. Everyone up here has kids. I have four kids. They're all, two went through the school and two are still in it, right? And so it's tough work. It's tough work, but you all helping us out, the SEA, the VEA. I know I have a bunch of constituents here, and we'll move forward with this. You know, we'll learn and we'll move forward. I mean, it's not a good thing, right? And so, okay. So now, to school renovation business for Ferry Farm, because everyone knows that I won't, I won't go too many minutes without saying something about Ferry Farm, right? So I just wanted to give a quick update. Okay? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I like that, too. Or, you know, my kid up at one of those fancy schools that my kid goes to, they do all that, right? Okay, okay, awesome. Renovate Ferry Farm update, right? So, and I'm going to read this right from Dr. Kizner's update to us, just so we're staying on. The staff, the staff here has held a design development meeting on the 27th of September with the school administration. And the bottom line up front is Ferry Farm is one of our oldest schools, 1955. It's kind of been on and off the rebuild renovation list for a long time, and so it's kind of, you know, hard to see and stuff like that. The kids are, it's an old school, and it really needs to... The, okay, yeah. And so it really needs to get updated. I'm really happy about a $10 million upgrade that the board here approved and the Stafford Board of Supervisors approved. And so that's moving forward, that $10 million update. And we're all very excited. Whatever little thing we can get done in the school, we're so happy about, because it's old school. And so one March will be the final, construction documents will be done. So folks that are at Ferry Farm now, they'll see surveyors out there taking, and I'm getting constituents to call, "How is the Ferry Farm pool? You know, Jeff Rouse, the gold medalist swam there, and, you know, it's been around since 55, right? That pool is going to be fine. We're going to have the parking, right, Mr. Haran? Where's Mr. Haran? That park, we're going to have at least a little bit of parking for them, that whole first row? Did you say yes, sir?
He did.
Okay, I'm just making sure that the truth didn't change, right? So, yeah, so we're moving forward with that, and I'm so, so happy about that. And it should be open, what's the date? We're looking at September 20? August 20? August, right? Because we have a new early calendar, so all the times we've said we're going to open September, we're going to open September, and then someone, some of the smart board members here said, "Hey, we're going early next year. We'll all be in school by August 13th." So we got to open August. So we'll be open by August 20.
Let you look at me.
I didn't look at you.
Okay. You looked in my direction.
I did look in your direction. Thank you.
You're done?
I'm done.
All right. Ms. Young, your turn.
So the reason why I was hesitating to say anything, because I was still in an emotional state, you know, they say women, we're emotional. So I didn't want to say anything, and I don't, you know, I'm not going to talk a lot about it. It's about action. It's about making change. So I'm not going to sit here and talk through it. It's about the have and have-nots, and it's about equity and diversity. And for some of you that know me, know that this is personal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I want to also thank everyone for coming out and sharing your thoughts. If you did not have an opportunity to speak, we welcome your correspondence. We have a meeting every first, no, the second and fourth Tuesday, so if you want to come back, come on back. I also want to thank Dr. Kizner for his leadership in this very difficult time for Stafford County Public Schools. I mean, we're all very proud of our schools, but something happened that we're not proud of. And I appreciate Dr. Kizner not pointing a finger at someone. It's not the staff. It comes back to this board, because it is a matter of policy. And it's time. It's time to come back. I know one of the speakers said, you know, mentioned that if necessary, well, Dr. Kizner's still our new superintendent. I guess we'll give you two months to be the new man on the block. But this is something that I think the board is responsible for. Ms. Decatur said, you know, we have the unique opportunity, I'll call it a challenge, because it is challenging. It's not as easy as one would think to make change. But I think this is the time to be addressing this, and I will be looking to the committee, which was established a while ago, but to specifically look, you know, into this, to come back to us. And I would certainly ask that it be sometime before, you know, this school year is done to give us time to consider it. I can't speak for the board, but I can say that I want to look at this. And I think we've heard, we've heard the message, and the message is clear. We care about the students. Everyone here cares about the students. And I would say that everyone at that school cared about the students. It may not have been demonstrated. And Dr. Kizner apologized. I think we all apologize, not only to the student that was involved, but to the families, to the community. And we do need to do better. So thank you, Dr. Kizner. I think if you all take a look into his record, he is an amazing man. He impressed me during our interviews when he talked about, you know, his passion for diversity and for making sure that every student has an equal opportunity, no matter where that student falls, on the spectrum, economy, anything. And I think with Dr. Kizner's leadership, we can move forward. And I would ask you to allow us to move forward. We're not going to brush this off, you know, we're not going to say it didn't happen, but we have to learn from it. And that's the only thing we can do from a very difficult situation, is to move forward and to make things better from here on. So we'll be looking, looking for Dr. Kizner, but we're very grateful that he is still here with us, because he's had, what, a hurricane? I mean, there's been so many natural disasters in the short period that he's been with us, but he's still here, and he is a sincere man and an amazing leader. So we'll be, we'll be looking for great things here, so. That brings us to superintendent's comments. We're not going to count the earlier statement, because that was separate.
So when we hear, hearing from the public, we're, we know we're supposed to hear, not debate, or answer questions, but I will use this opportunity to maybe address some of your questions, which I think the board has alluded. So in my orientation of life, in my 20 years as superintendent, I guess I've come to the conclusion that policies have a place, but best actions and common sense have a greater place. And I think we could accomplish what we heard tonight from everyone with policies aligning behavior and decisions that will not only benefit transgender children, but all children. So it's not that I was saying if we need policies as, I just think we can move forward, well, we moved forward yesterday, but we can move forward again tomorrow, with or without a policy. That's really my whole point. But I will bring the board, after consultation with stakeholders, and I do thank people who have shared things tonight. Policies, I don't want to rush it, I want to do best practices that people could really understand. Changing real quickly, I do want to just mention something that Dr. Chase mentioned. The board, from the day I got hired, made it clear that we got to gear up for the next school year faster, okay? And I know it's like early October, but before you know it, it's going to be July. And so I want to talk very briefly about these positions. And this is just another policy discussion that we could have at another time. There are really competing policies in our policy manuals that says what I can or cannot do as superintendent as it relates to personnel positions. I'm just being honest with you. And if you want a list of the competing policies, email me, and I will give it to you, and you can tell me if I'm interpreting wrong. But we need to move forward, especially on certain ones that get us ready for the new Early Childhood Center that will be in North Stafford. We have to have staff hired after the Christmas winter break. Assistant principal was discussed, a bookkeeper, and we're recommending an early childhood special coordinator, so we have one, two, for the whole division. Recruiting. Okay, we're going to take a short summer recess, and we got to have teachers in place for new teacher orientation, professional development, and so on. HR did ask for another position. I've gone back to HR, so I know I've spoken to each one of you individually or through email, asked them to reassess their current staff to see if they could get that position by redistributing some responsibilities. The other position is in finance, specifically working with VRS and other areas, the hybrid, what's it called, the hybrid employees, was that VRS 2? I don't know what the... So that is a position, and I could tell you with no reservation, I've been here enough Saturdays to see finance people working to get the work done, and that really is not how we want to treat our staff. So I will send you a very specific list of staff members. I know I had a chance to talk at committee and individuals. Very, very quickly, somebody mentioned transportation. That has been obviously a challenge. I do want to put things in context. I think it's always important to put things in context. According to our directive of transportation, we have 220 to 230 buses on the road every day. We transport over 17,000 students, okay? And we do value every time we get feedback on our performance, but I just want you to realize that we are doing a really good job getting most picked kids to where they need to be, on time and safe. We also need to acknowledge that we do have some challenges when it comes to getting staff and keeping staff. And we had a meeting yesterday of finance, transportation, HR, and we're going to explore Region Four and Region Three, Northern Virginia and our region, to learn what they are doing in the area of transportation as it relates to incentivizing people to work for them and to stay with them. And in two weeks, because we want to move fast on these recommendations, or at least to be aware of it as we prepare for the budget, some of these things may really be things moving forward for the following year. The other thing I just want to thank you, and I really think the community is thanking you, and we don't talk a lot about it, well, maybe we do. We haven't talked a lot about since I've been here. So I had an opportunity to go to Richmond today for a meeting that was sponsored by the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation and the Virginia Chamber of Commerce, talking about the remarkable value of early childhood education. And there was a neuroscientist that spoke about it as it relates to brain development, and then there was a leading business member of our state talking about it as it prepares young people, even the little kids, birth to three, as our future workers. So... So, the investment, and you've probably heard that every dollar invested in early childhood has about a $14 return. So, as we're looking to expand our early childhood opportunities, I just want you to know Stafford is going in the completely right direction, and I would continue to encourage you to keep going in that direction. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to action item 10.01, approve the school board's FY '20 budget priorities. Dr. Chase, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the FY '20 budget priorities.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dr. Chase. I think Ms. Egan got that second in faster.
Damn.
Move on.
My stuff's exciting, too.
All right, is there any discussion here?
Just one comment. Good work by the team on this. I think every single goal in here is appropriate and needed. Once again, for the sixth year in a row, my priorities are educational, professional pay, number one, and number two, reduce class sizes. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. McOsker. Any other comments?
Yes, one.
Ms. Hazard.
We discussed this very briefly at the Fab. I believe that the priorities that we have here are very solid, so I, and I appreciate Dr. Chase taking my little niggly stuff. The one thing I do think we need to discuss, and it may be intrinsic contained in here, is the SEAs coming to us with the 5% across the board. Are we, do we want to, within the context of this, I don't think approving these tonight limits that, but I do think we, as a board, need to examine, are we looking for a budget that has that 5% in it? Because one of the things I would want to note, and Dr. Chase, you were right on this, on the part about saying, what is our comparison market? And I believe the discussion that we had, thank you, not, thank you, Jamie, for not coming, but thank you for letting me sit in and hear that our market is really a part of what the issue is. Remember, our teachers, and I'm speaking just to teachers at this moment, but that does not, please know that that does not say anything against other staff, but teachers, we tend to have a lot of more data. What we are seeing is you professionals come out, some of you come off with college debt, all that, and it will take, in Stafford County, almost 16 years for you to make $50,000. If you go to the north, to Prince William County, it will take you four. And I think that we have to be real in terms of figuring out what our real market is. I understand why we started with the nine because those are the same ones as our funding body. At that time, we needed, in my opinion, to make the case, you compare yourselves to these nine, where do we fall? That was a great starting place, but I believe, and Sarah, I will say, thank you for really making that a big deal because that was a great start, but just like the other things we've discussed tonight, we need to move forward. And I think that changing of the market, which is highlighted in this, is very, very critical. So, I will be supporting the motion, but I do think, as a board, we need to have some discussion. I don't know if everybody has read those attachments, which were very well put together by the SEA, and I would just wonder if the Fab or somebody would like to have a dialogue with the SEA on those, because I believe they brought very, very detailed information. I don't believe a dialogue here is the best. Perhaps the Fab might consider that. That would just be my suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Any other discussion? No, I just, I'd like to thank Dr. Chase and the Fab for all your work in putting this together. I think this is a very well-stated position for the priorities and goals for the FY '20 budget. And I appreciate all the work that you all did in putting this together. Now, it's going to be up to us to advocate for it. All right, then, we'll bring this to the board for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the school board's FY '20 budget priorities? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item 10.02, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy 1120, board slash superintendent communication. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Mr. McOsker. Do we have any discussion?
I would like to offer a substitute motion. I'd like to offer a substitute motion to defer consideration of the new superintendent's policy until the completion of the superintendent's first 100 days to align with his recommendations about reorganization and realignment of duties and after additional interaction with the board and members of the community.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a substitute motion, and is, do I understand correctly, Ms. Hazard, you want to defer action on this proposed policy for 100 days?
Maybe not the 100 days.
No, I just want to make sure I understand.
Right, to align with Dr. Kizner's talks about his implementation of his 100-day plan, that he had indicated several things he was bringing, that this policy, to me, seems like it might be part of the big package of the fruits of his 100 days, of what you've learned about us, what we've learned about him, and making sure that we don't have the thing, have what occurred, as Dr. Kizner's pointing out, certain policies that have come in, and they're done in a vacuum. I haven't done a full look at all the policies of saying, if we approve this, are we going to find something somewhere else that says we should be doing something else? And it's not, please know, it is not against Dr. Kizner or anything of that.
Let me just address this. This policy, you actually have policies in your policy manual that already give me, address this. Truthfully, our policy manual needs a remarkable audit, and this policy is your 2013 policy with a little tweak. And in so many areas, this is the best practice, this is the VSBA practice, this was your practice in 2013, this is what your superintendent needs to be effective, and I leave it to the board to make the final determination. But I would just share with you that, again, I would offer you to spend the time I've been spending reading our policies, and you will come to the same conclusion that what we are consistent about is inconsistency.
Yes, all right. Is there any other, we discussed this, correct, Mr. Nelson, and then we vote? Or any discussion on the substitute motion?
I'll just add to the discussion. I didn't, wasn't prepared for a substitute motion, but oddly enough, I was, I was going to ask that we revisit this a little, a little further into your time here because I truly don't feel like I've had an opportunity to work with you and see how you work and see how you operate and how you manage others. And I, I just felt that it was a little bit quick, and I am with you that our policies need to be reviewed. And I also understand that at times, sometimes you have to fix, you know, a broader policy for it to snowball and make the rest of it efficient. I don't think that this particular policy is one of those cases that's going to prohibit you from becoming more efficient in other, you know, policy review. And so, I just felt like personally, and I know I said this at our work session, too, personally, I just, I wanted, hopefully for us, to have a little bit more time to work together and readdress this, and I'm certain that I could probably support it, just given what I know about you now and how I've seen you so far, but, but it's only been, you know, a month. And so, I'm just, I'm asking for a little more time before we change this.
Any other discussion? Dr. Chase.
I guess my reaction to this is that, you know, we, I look on it as I have two employees, and they're Missy and Dr. Kizner, and that I need to provide them with the resources they need to be effective in their jobs. So, I don't really feel like deferring this because I feel like Dr. Kizner's asked us to do this in order to be effective. So, I'm going to probably vote no to the delay and yes to passing the policy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No? All right, I'm, I'm going to not support the substitute motion because Dr. Kizner's asked us to take this action in an effort to streamline his management of the organization. And I don't think it will adversely affect the board's ability to communicate, you know, with our, our schools. And I want to support Dr. Kizner. Now, if this turns out to be something that, you know, doesn't work or may not be needed, we can always come back. But at this point, this has been before us for some time, and I have not heard anything from, you know, anyone on the board suggesting that, you know, there was an issue with this. So, I'm going to be voting no for the substitute in support of Dr. Kizner. And I agree with Dr. Chase, we have two employees, which is, fortunately, they're both here and they're sticking with us. So, thank you. Ms. Egan.
I'm fine either way, but what I, a couple of weeks ago, I brought to everybody's attention that I wanted something added to the work session, which we didn't have time for, which was to sit and have a work session about how we were going to go forward with plans on what is Dr. Kizner's, you know, what is our expectation of him? We don't want to just send him out into the wild and not give him a set of expectations that we can, you know, a year from now, measure his performance on. So, I want to make sure that we're not forgetting to get that done while we're looking at all this stuff. So, just a little.
That's a good point, and Ms. Hall, put that on one of our future sessions in the not-too-far future. All right.
If I could just have a final comment, I do think that the board raised many issues in our work session, that we did raise concerns about not having a response time from the superintendent, also about the approval, also means disapproval to not go into the schools. And I think that was of some concern, or at least it was raised. As I said, I think best practices, I would like us to work as a board to do that. I am, you know, I understand, you know, where the board is, and I certainly know that I believe Dr. Kizner and I talk, but I just, in terms of organizational management, this just gives me some pause. So, I just feel I have to be honest.
All right, so do you want us to go forward with the vote, or the vote on the?
Call the question.
All right, now, what we are voting on is a substitute motion. So, you can vote. If the substitute motion passes, then we're, we'll vote on it.
If it passes, then that's it.
Is it? If it doesn't pass.
We get it.
Okay, if it doesn't pass, then we revert back to the original motion. All right, so just to be clear, what we're voting on is a substitute motion to defer the, I'll say, consideration of the superintendent's proposed revision to the policy 1120, board superintendent communications for 100 days. Is that, okay, all right. So, that's what we're voting on, that motion. Ms. Hall, would you, well, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Ms. Hall, would you poll the board? I anticipated asking that question. Sorry.
No.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McOsker?
No.
Ms. Young?
No.
Madam Chair, motion fails.
All right, then that brings us back to the, well, it brings us back to the original motion, which is to approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy 1120, board slash superintendent's communications. All in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one comment on this motion. I didn't, I didn't want to.
Not fast enough.
Apologies, I didn't want to, I didn't want to comment on the.
We'll let Mr. McOsker comment. Anybody else that wants to comment, we'll come back, and we've got plenty of time.
So, I think this is a well-written communications, you know, the superintendent is in charge. He's the operational boss of all the schools. He owns all, he owns, quote unquote, owns all the superintendents or all the principals. He's asking here for school board members to let him know when we're going to go into the buildings, because, you know, there may be some, there may be some pressure from employees of the schools when school board members just, anytime they feel like it, just run into the building, start asking questions, start gaining data, and that's, that's been happening. Okay? I'm not saying that's a bad thing in sparse and occasions, but all you have to do is just, this policy says, hey, boss, Dr. Kizner, I need to go visit my school, and I, give me 20, because you know what? Sometimes when, when school board members run in the school, the principal's in meetings with like three parents deep about special education meetings. They're in meetings with the parents. They're, they're busy teaching kids, right? So, it is, it is an issue. So, this kind of gets after that by just kind of putting the school board members in a box, saying, hey, listen, guys, you're my boss, but you know what? You don't just run around all 17 elementary schools and all the high schools, as you see fit, badging yourself in and just running around the hall. That's not our place. Our power comes when we sit, all seven of us here at the board. That's where our power. Individually, our power is zippo, okay? Individually, our power is zippo. We, our power is derived from the board, okay? So. This is an old policy about the old 15-minute standard that Dr. Benson jumped on so eagerly, and it was, hey, if you're going to, if you're going to have this long process that you're going to burden my staff with, at least let me know what it is. And so, that really hasn't changed here in this policy. And so, those are the reasons that I'm going to happily support this.
I think Ms. Egan has come for the question. Ms. Hes, yes, please. All right, thank you, Mr. McOsker. Ms. Egan's called for the question. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve 10.02, the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy 1120, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. McOsker?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
I just wanted to say I'm guilty for buzzing in and probably talking to me. I thought I was helping out the principals, getting up in there and.
But we just need an aye or.
Is there an aye in there?
An aye or nay at this point?
I am guilty.
So, I, oh, I guilty in comment. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let's make this clear, was that an aye or nay?
It's an aye.
It's an aye, okay.
I am guilty of.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
Thank you, 5 to 2.
You're not the only one that's guilty.
Can I, can I just apologize, though, but the principals liked me in there, and I thought I was helping out, but after hours, when I need to get in there, Dr. Kizner, I have your number right here, so I will be dialing up, letting you know when I need to get in there for any activity that my community wants.
All right, okay. That brings us to 10.03, approve an energy audit agreement with train energy systems to identify energy conservation and/or operational efficiency measures through the energy performance contracting process.
Motion to approve 10.03.
Okay. Second. All right, I got Mrs. Egan. I'll leave that second up to you, Ms. Hall. Sounded like Ms. Decatur. All right, is there any discussion on this item? Any substitute motions? No? Okay, all right. All in favor of the motion to approve the energy audit agreement with train energy services, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, no, no need to poll the board. 10.04, approve the award of a professional service contract in the amount of $167,000 using VPSA funds to Ascent Engineering Group of Roanoke, Virginia, for designing construction administration services for the repair of mechanical systems at Rock Hill Elementary School.
I move that we approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Decatur, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 10.05, approve the proposed revisions to the Joint Capital Improvement Plan CIP policy. This is the policy that we discussed in our work session earlier this evening.
I move that we approve 10.05.
Second.
In motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. I think we need to start somewhere, working together with the board of supervisors so we can move forward and get work done.
Okay, Ms. Hazard, did you want to say something? You look like you're about ready to.
I mean, I've said this every night that we've had it on the agenda. I don't believe that this has been a joint process. I think we can, I think we can do better, but I think that having the board of supervisors pass a policy before sending it to us does not smack of a joint process to me. It just does not. I believe that there is not, again, a recognition of the challenges that the school district has. We do not have enrollment figures that are usable or. We do not have enrollment figures that are usable or the projections, excuse me, till November. I believe it is very difficult for us to pick out CIP projects when we don't have new enrollment figures. And I, and I do understand that it's tempered with, well, we only have to look five years out. But to me, the process of the CIP is to plan, and we have to start planning, and we have to start planning with good numbers. I believe that us and the Board of Supervisors can come up with a workable plan. I will certainly, you know, participate, obviously, because I want what's best for the school district, but I don't believe that it addresses the challenges of the school district with the best information. And I am concerned that a small group of people can override the school board with our, but our committee needs to go in and fight for us, so Fab members, please, fight for us. But I am very concerned that we're going to come with numbers later that can be overseen. And the 3R program, I am still not absolutely convinced how that has to be handled in the budget in relation to how this has been brought forward to us. I'm still just not clear how we're handling it, so.
Okay. Any other comments? No? All in favor of the motion to approve the proposed revisions to the joint CIP policy, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Me. Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. McCosker?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Hi. I mean, I.
Did she say aye?
That was an aye.
Is that a aye or a hi?
10.06, approve this FY20-FY29 CIP, large project and infrastructure project priorities. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Decatur?
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion?
So, what are we approving?
Okay. So, I, I would personally suggest that we approve this list as is, send it over, have it scored. It will be brought back to us. I understand, I asked the question, do we then have to approve it? I understand it will be brought back to us, and I believe we can make tweaks at that point. And we also have the three of us in this committee that will be working on it all year, and I'm sure.
Is that correct, Mr. Horan, that it will be brought back? I think.
Well, I asked this in the work session.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that he says it in open session.
Yes, ma'am.
So. Were you listening?
I was.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
So, certainly, the process brings it back to the board for consideration. As you've discussed, the Fab members will be participants in the OSC as part of the process. I do want to point out to the board that the county is requesting all of the project, candidates' projects that the board wants to forward over to have detailed information associated with that. And that means the year in which we desire the project to be, so that we can fill the data sheets out properly, so that we can identify the cost of the proposed project. We will not be able to do that unless we have some idea when the school board would like to have those projects considered. We will not be able to nail that cost down, because we do have current cost, but we do not have the proposed year that you would like to support that project in.
Weren't we instructed at the work session that we would be able to get that back and then, and then go ahead and assign?
I don't recall saying that. If I did, I was mistaken.
And where did the years come from that are already on there? Just real quick, sorry. The years that are already listed on there, where did those come from? Old data?
We suggested from a need perspective, based on the projections for new construction, based on the enrollment projections. That's where the high school, elementary school, and to some degree, rebuild Hartwood.
That would be next year.
The other project, that's right. The other projects are subjective. They're all renovation projects, and the need date, from a facility perspective, is as soon as we can get them done. And so, we listed those as a starting point for discussion in 2020, realizing, as what the superintendent said, that it's not realistic to try and support all of those in 2020. We know that. So, that was the intent, to stimulate the discussion in the work session, which we were, did not achieve.
And Dr. Kizner, did you have something you wanted to?
Previous documents had the right, the other column completed, right? We left it blank today. But we had completion, anticipated completion dates.
They were subjective, and they were provided by staff.
Right. So, you have seven board members, you got how many projects?
Nine.
You do the math. There's going to be a lot of calculations to figure out how you're all going to agree on the order.
I count 10.
I'm sorry.
So, this, I guess what I'm just suggesting is, is allow staff to put dates on it, come, and I know, so they could move forward on the other side. Because this is the process, doesn't mean the process can't be amended. And then, at the next board meeting, show you the dates that staff concluded, and if anybody has real concerns with those dates, we'll adjust it and get it back downtown, I mean, across the street.
I'm fine with that. Are you?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
So, we do have one, one priority here that high school, six hours, most of you all.
I didn't hear any disagreement on that.
Number one.
I mean, I, it didn't matter to me. So, that was one. And did we say, I thought renovations, if they were needed, those would be the priorities.
Why don't we just go with the high school? Because I thought when we left the work session, we had agreed that we would send it over with, without the need date on there, because I think the need date is a little misleading in terms of, you know, priorities, because if you just looked at the need date, then the high school would come behind.
Could I just ask one more question before we move on from that? I'm sorry that I'm interrupting, I really am. But when we put a need date on there, it, it's kind of null and void anyways when we start balancing it, because it slides, right? I mean, it's, it's based on affordability.
We certainly know that in the first five years, there's affordability balance. In the second five years, the need date is not dependent on affordability. So, you can, you can, in theory, have four or five projects identified in year '27 and '[1011.87][1011.87]'28 that aren't dependent upon affordability, and they could be presented as part of the formal approved CIP, that it's there, it's recognized as a requirement, we don't have to have it balanced. As it gets closer to being in the first five years, then you start to put some serious thought and discussion in both boards as to affordability.
Can I ask a question? Everybody agreed on the high school. What, where you all stand on these renovates that are 2020? And how much different would it change when the staff takes it over? What would that date be for those renovates? Those, there's one, two, three, four renovates, including Ferry Farm.
I think that's an excellent question, but that's a question that we need to ask Dr. Kizner to address with staff and come back to us with a report at the next meeting. Because I don't want to put Mr. Horan on the spot.
Thank you.
He's already on the spot, but anyway, yes, sure.
But he works for Dr. Kizner.
You don't have to remind me.
Yeah, so, because at the work session, I think I heard another board member say, I'd rather not move renovations first, I'd rather add additional space.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so.
I asked that question, and then everybody said that.
We could conclude, if we want to, if you want to, I work for you guys, so I could stay here all night long. I just go upstairs tomorrow. I have an extra tie. So, the question that I think, Scott, I would offer you this, you, and this is the problem. He's telling us, and I understand, that they want to know the date so they could start doing their preliminary calculations.
Yep.
Okay? And it doesn't appear we're ready to offer the date. And what I would maybe respectfully suggest is, I'm not sure another two weeks is going to make or break the process.
Okay.
Can I offer?
Oh, sorry.
And so, if the board wants to make this final determination, knowing that, again, these are more aspirational than real, okay?
That's what I'm saying.
Is to give staff, date, give time to put dates on it, and then we'll get you the information before the next two weeks.
Could I, could I offer maybe a, trying to figure out a way to do the middle of the road? How about as a potential middle of the road? I believe if we put that the high school construction, we don't, I think the message that I want to make sure we send to the Board of Supervisors is if we put these dates, we may be viewed as saying, we think these are more important than something you've already put in, in the appro, whatever document we have right now. That is my fear of sending it with these dates, as I stated, the 2020s and stuff. It seems like what we should be saying is, after 2025, we believe this group of projects are the ones we want to go with. Now, Scott, I can't tell you which date of those, but at least if somebody in any of our jurisdictions came in and said, okay, mine, because I know high school is very important, what do you mean, we're doing, and nothing, no, I'll pick, any of them will be controversial, can we make the document say, after 2025, I know you need to calculate costs, but at least to get you, we know we're five years out on costing these items, and then how the priorit, prioritization falls, we'll play with it. Is that a somewhat middle of the road?
So, yeah, let me, I haven't spoken on the matter yet. So, let's, and it's important. So, you're right. For the first five years, we're kind of locked in for a little bit of money, and then the five years out, 25 to 30, as Mr. Horan's told us a couple of times now, that's where we're, we're fighting for that extra money. And that, Ms. Hazard's idea is not that bad. The supervisors need to know what our priorities are for the next, okay, for the next 10 years, five years. Now, why I'm kind of excited about your, your idea is because I realize that Phase 2 Ferry Farm may only be $6 million, or maybe it's, maybe it's something, we do something down south with Drew or Melchers, or, or, or something like that, within the five-year window, we may only have $17 million extra, extra money that isn't accounted for. So, but you're right, you can't start with $17 million from now, five years out, you can't start a new high school for $150 million. That doesn't work. So, so that's one point. But my second point is this, is on the 3R infrastructure list, I would definitely like to see more for Melchers, more for Ferry Farm in there, because there are some years that we're not getting anything. And we discussed in the, in the work view, work meeting, that in 2007, the study said, hey, you need $10 million between 2007 and '17. And because we were on the rebuild, we didn't get most of that, right? And now, here we are in '18, and we're going to get a $10 million rebuild, but I will, I want, I want this.
Renovation.
Renovation, and I want to say for the record that a full renovation that Moncur was costed at was almost $30 million. So, the same renovation that Falmouth got, the same renovation that Staffordell got, and the same renovation that Grafton Village got will cost $30 million right now. And so, you know, we knew that we weren't going to get much, but I'm taking the $9.9 million and doing that first phase of the renovation, but you know what? I don't think it's fair to say, okay, Ferry Farm, you're off the rebuild list, here's your $10 million of renovation, be happy with it, and we'll come talk to you in 10 years, right? That's not an option. So, I would like at least Phase 2 to get done in Ferry Farm, number one, or if it can't happen, at least make sure on the infrastructure list, we're given $5 million a year, Ferry Farm isn't down for zero for a couple of years. I mean, you know, the dishwasher that half works all the time, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that, and I, and I know we know about it, but you can't, you can't, you can't like take both. You can't take all the money for the renovation and not give any 3R infrastructure project list to, to, to an old school like that. So, but, what is, what is all this?
Did you work out the dates?
What are they shoving under my, oh, is that you? Okay. So, anyway, that's, that's my thought. I know that didn't help our situation here too much, but maybe we do need to, maybe we do need to leave, come up with a list right now.
Renovates.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can do it right now without further discussion.
Or pull it, or pull it, and pull the 3R infrastructure list, because if our list, if the board decides, like for me, I would just give, please give me the opportunity, if you say, hey, we can't get Ferry Farm Phase 2 done, because we don't have the money, please give me the opportunity to say, okay, but at least add me, start adding on '23 and '24, you know, $500, $600,000 out of the $5 million, to make sure, I'm trying to catch my, my students up with being equitable. I mean, really.
And we have to do that with all the old schools.
And all the old schools, you know, yeah.
They got to make it.
Yes.
Ferry Farm is the only one that's left. I mean, 10 years ago, this board said, we have five schools to either renovate or rebuild. Ferry Farm was the last on that list, and you're right, it got left out. Hopefully, we will be moving forward now. And we know we got Phase 1, but we've got Phase 2, 3, and 4 in here. They're all say they're needed in FY20. Realistically, it's not going to happen in FY20. The question is whether we want to send the list to the supervisors with the high school identified as our number-one priority, which I didn't hear any disagreement from anybody on this board, without a priority order on the other, or if we want to wait to send this over later. Now, when Dr. Chase and I met with Mrs. Bomke, Dr. Kizner, and the county administrator, she made it very clear that if we did not send this list, that action would move forward without our input.
And that's why I was trying to.
So, if we're going to defer this, I would suggest that we be ready to take action at the next meeting at the latest.
How many times?
I know, we've, we've, I know, we've, we've had work session after work session after work session. But if we, if we want to prioritize, then we're going to have to do it. Other than the high school, I don't think the high school, there's no, no issue on the high school, right? Everybody agrees that's number one. That's also the most expensive, you know, item on the list.
And I would just go back to sort of my comments of saying, based on what we've been told, the five-year window, we still want to stick with where we are with high school number five, it's, it's high school number six. The remaining projects, we believe, based on, but gosh, if there's money available, we'd love to fund something earlier, but I just don't want there to be any perception within our community or that, that we're coming off of number one. If we put those FY, I'm trying to come up with a way that we can have something we can send over tonight, because I think that's important, that can we have some kind of asterix on there. But I, I will support Mr. McCosker on the 3R, because most of you all know I have concerns there. But I think we need to say, these are priority projects, we know they can't be under the current, before the five-year, but they need to then be analyzed. I, I'm trying to give the broadest, but I think if we put the 2020, I really believe it gets confusing.
So, two things, I, just real quickly. You don't want to put projects, in my opinion, before the high school, because that's going because that's going to decrease the funding you're going to get for the high school. You've got to do it right. That's a new building. I think your recommendation earlier made sense to me at least, because you're saying, let's push everything out after the high school, if I understood you correctly. After that.
But if the money's not there for the high school.
If the money's, if you start putting in 10, 20, $30 million projects.
Yeah, but it's there anyway. It's there anyway. It's there, so it's going to get spent. So if we don't have a project for it.
They're not going to save it and say, okay, we're going to save this for the high school.
You know what I mean, they'll use it on.
Okay, one at a time, so we can hear.
Well, I mean, you have one project, the addition to Fredericksburg Christian, 2026. Do people feel comfortable with that number pushing it to 2026? I mean, we could, you have constructed elementary school 18 to 2028. Do you feel comfortable with those dates? I mean, you could probably knock four or five of these off right away. If you feel comfortable with the need date, because the need date is so far out, it could be the realistic date.
Because. I don't have the information to move the high school.
What they're going to do is they're going to put it in that 10, they have that 10-year CIP. It's already costed out, inflation.
But they're going to.
They're going to start plugging numbers.
I think what I heard was they're going to choose the dates for you.
Well, unless, if the Board of Supervisors needs priorities from us.
That's what they've asked for. They've asked for a project list. I mean, we've all agreed on the high school.
Large priority.
Do we want to identify a number-two priority after the high school?
Elementary.
Elementary school.
Elementary school 18?
Yes.
18.
Do we want to leave it for FY 2028?
Right now, that, I do, yes.
Okay, all right. What about rebuild Hartwood Elementary School? Do we want to leave that on for FY 2028?
If it's going to add capacity and it's going to be put in the urban services area, yeah.
Yeah, that could stay there. I thought maybe move it up eventually.
Well, 2028, remember, we're not restricted to a dollar amount. It's the first five years.
Right. What happened? Say it again.
We're not restricted to a certain dollar amount in terms of the county meeting its budgetary constraints.
What does this dark line means, Dr. Kizner? Scott?
What do you?
One, two, three, and then there's that line. What did you mean by that?
That was a holdover from the previous chart. It has no meaning on this chart.
Okay.
I guess I would be in favor. I would ask the board to consider rewording Hartwood to rebuild or renovate, and then that can be discussed at some point. Does that make sense? Renovate as.
Rebuild or renovate?
Yeah. I don't think we'll get approved for renovation.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could do that, but the way that it scored, it probably, I mean.
But I did ask Scott to bring back, you know, to bring the option.
Yeah, but the issue is that it's not in the urban services area. So why would we renovate something that's not, that has no services? I don't think the Board of Supervisors will allow us to do that. That would be foolish of them. Just my opinion.
I just wanted to see what it costs. In order for me to make a decision and go on it.
One at a time, one at a time. Ms. Young?
I'm just saying, in order for me, I wasn't here, I'm here now. I want to see those numbers, so I could make a realistic assessment and decision.
What numbers?
Scott knows which numbers I'm asking.
So the availability of funds within the first five years and the availability of funds as estimated within the second five years, that would be out.
But it doesn't have to balance, so we can send over.
After the first five years.
After the first five years doesn't have to balance. But if we find out, like I mentioned, that we have, the courthouse went down, and we have 17 million, maybe the 10 classrooms are Gary Melchers down south. So we have a balanced early childhood educational facility in the county. And then maybe we can get some Phase Two done, so we can complete the renovation of Ferry Farm. I mean, that money in the first five years is not going to go to the high school.
Okay, could we, could we take the first three, the top three as priority, one, two, three? And then next on the list, prioritize those, put, you know, Ferry Farm Elementary School as number four, but change the date to, change the date to, no, five years out. That way it doesn't have to balance.
Oh, that's true.
Is that, can we do that? Can we agree on some sort of prioritization after the first one, two, three? After that dark line, can we kind of just figure something out as far as priorities for those and date them all five years out?
I'll do the one and two.
Does that fix anything?
I will do one and two. I want information on three.
Yeah.
Talking for nothing.
No, I think I know what you mean. I would be, I'd be happy with one and two right now. And I know Hartwood is going to be in the out years.
So is 18. All of this is in the out years.
However, it's very, very possible right now that we'll put 2,000 school capacity, with elementary school 18 being off 17, or in that Hartwood district, and also the new Hartwood being in the district, and you have the old Hartwood. So you'll have, we're asking the county to give us a capacity of 2,500 students.
I thought 18 was going.
And that whole, so I mean, that's the elementary school 18 and the Hartwood brand-new, like both in the same year. That kind of confuses me a little bit.
Yeah, I thought Embry Mill was supposed to get the number 18.
Embry Mill, there's a site, there's a site on Embry Mill.
Yeah, but the need is, right now, I thought I heard earlier in the work session, that we need an elementary school in the north and one in the south. Did I just hear you say?
That's what I heard. That's what I heard for the first time today. But, yeah.
Okay. Well, and I still, I think with respect to elementary schools, because we've purchased the Christian school, and we're building an elementary school, and our capacity numbers, we corrected them to reflect what we're actually doing in our schools. I don't really know when we need the next elementary school yet, until staff has presented us with those corrected numbers, so.
And that's our challenge.
Right. I mean, I'm very clear that we need to construct elementary school number 18, but I don't know when and if we want to rebuild or renovate Hartwood.
Right.
Do we need to have a work session on this to get it done? Because it's, we're not getting anything accomplished until quarter to ten.
This is a fluid document. Can we please approve something to send over? I understand the need.
I say one and two, and then the renovates. Why isn't it, oh, boy, Jamie?
How about we just do one and two? And if they want it, the policy.
Well, the only concern I would have about sending over one and two is not because they're our top two priorities, but they don't identify any priorities in the immediate future, which is when there is going to be some funding available. And I think that we need to say what we want in the immediate future, in the next five years. If we don't, then we are handing that choice over to the Board of Supervisors.
I agree with you, but that's not something we're going to get, we're going to be able to sit down and hash out tonight, because that's involved with a lot of stuff, so.
Let's do one and two and the renovates. Like, can we vote, can we at least see where we are with that? Who agrees with that? Anyone?
I'm okay with one and two and the renovates.
Well, I think even with the renovates, I think we're going to need to prioritize them, because we're not, there's not going to be funding available to do all of these. And we have so many needed two years from now. So we need to decide, what is our priority? If we don't decide it, it will be decided by the supervisors. And I think that would be derelict in our duty as the school board.
So which one is more important, Drew Middle or Ferry Farms?
Drew's got, Drew has a lot of.
We don't have any information in front of us.
Right. It seems like everybody wants to get this off the plate now, and if, so if they're asking.
We can come back again, but I would suggest, if we want to come back for another work session, that we at a minimum, we're going to send over the policy. We're going to say, we approve the policy. It wasn't unanimous, but we approve the policy. We can say that we have two top priorities, which are the high school number six and construct elementary school number 18, that we will get back to the supervisors within the next 30 days, if that's agreeable to the board, with the list of our other priorities.
Dr. Kizner said two weeks.
I guess, I guess, what information, that, what information you don't have now that you would like in two weeks or 30 days to help you with, to make a decision? That would be, I'm not, you don't have to answer right now, but that would be very helpful, so we're not sitting here in two or four weeks having this same conversation.
Right.
Because, you know, I just think we all would agree to that, okay, so.
I would think at a minimum, we're going to need the dollar amounts.
Okay, I just want one more comment, and then I will shut up, right? But need date, to me, meant something regardless. The staff put need date, 2020, yes, that's yesterday. Sometimes we say, we need something yesterday. So when is the next time that we could say we need it then? If it's not 2020, can we say 2022, 20, whatever? So to me, those renovates are important, because they were important to the staff.
But what we're going to be saying is not that we don't need them then. We're going to say, what are our priorities? We've got five items here listed for FY '20. We need to, we need to put them in priority order. We may not get them, but at least we will be expressing our request as a board for our priority. They may turn around and the Oversight Committee may say no.
You know.
I mean, I appreciate the Drew Middle School, and I'm sure there's a need there, but I haven't had a chance to get more information on that. I would like to get some information, including the space in the basement that is used for something else now. Is that potentially space to be used for the middle school? It's something I would want to know before I could weight the priority.
Okay, that's fair, but when we get that information, let's be prepared. And let's not wait until the work session to discuss it. Let's do some homework, and when we get to the work session, be ready to make decisions. Because we're just dragging this thing out.
At the work session, we will have the discussion. At the board meeting, we will make the decision.
I understand all of that. But if we have the information before, we could look at it and, you know, try to come up, make sure that we know what we're talking about when we get to the work session. We could start, you know, we could.
So anybody that has any request for information, please send it to Dr. Kizner by Friday, so he will have an opportunity to get it together. And as in his new communication policy, he will be sharing it with all of us.
Ms. Healy, I would support, though, what you said, that something can go out after tonight's meeting. Do we need a motion to send? Because I do want us to look like we are struggling with this, but it's, we do have two, one and two. I agree. I mean, I have further thoughts on things, but I'm, believe me, I've got enough stuff here to argue them. But that's not what we'll do tonight. But say one and two, and say, the other projects we are examining in light of our enrollment and other information, we want to provide a analysis of when this, when this is and whether capacity, in my opinion, is added. I think the Fredericksburg Christian School is something we should not dismiss. And Ms. Healy and I completely agree, as I stated in the work session. Renovate Drew Middle School. I don't know if the private day school needs to be a separate block or part of that block, but I do believe that is a discussion at some point we need to have, as long, you know, as the board seems they want to expand whatever. Drew does not seem to be, so you, Dr. Chase, on that, but I think that's one.
But this is something that they could decide really soon.
Can we go then make a motion to send over the first two?
What we'll have to do is go back to the original motion, see if the motion maker will amend, agree to amend that motion to limit the list to the first two as the board's priorities with a.
Who was the motion maker?
You were.
You.
And you're going to.
I'd be happy to amend the motion.
For the second, for the elementary school, the target date is 2028?
Well, we don't.
The open date?
I don't know how.
Somewhere in there, wherever the affordability is between those five years.
Well, at some point, we had the information to put those dates there.
Those five years, the outside five years.
There's no limit.
There's a limit.
Not right now.
No, you can put 28, but it doesn't matter, is what I'm saying, okay?
Yes, that's true.
It's out five years. Put 29, put 28.
If Dr. Kizner, if you're comfortable, that's when we're going to need the school. And I'm assuming that since that's here on this list, it came to the board in our work session, it's here for action, that that is a valid and proper need date.
Ha, so you're, never mind.
It's the one that we used from last year's CIP. So we have no additional new information to base it off of. I think we have to use the 2028. Scott, the rest of these dates, was that the Fab work session where we all sat in there and said, let's go for broke? We need these by these dates? And we just, we put those dates on there? Do you recall that?
I don't recall that, but I do know that the data available to us in the enrollment projections from last year is where we came up with the need date for elementary school 18.
Yeah, okay. So what do I need to do here? Amend the motion?
Amend the motion? Would you consider amending the motion to send the large capital project list, priorities of the school board with, only to include, construct high school number six? Need, and we're just going to say that our date, is that the open date? Is that correct? The need date is the date to open in FY 2025? Is that, need date means open, right? Just want to make sure.
Well, there are two separate dates. The need date, based on the enrollment projections, if you recall, is 2025. That's when the need, when we go to 100%.
So that's when we need to open it?
That's when the need date is. Now, the affordability in the first five years is what pushed it to opening in FY '26, just so you know. There's no ability right now, affordability-wise, from last year's CIP, that we could open the high school in 2025. That's why it was deferred to FY '26.
This is a new year.
It is, but I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of any changes in the first five year of affordability that would cause us to change that. But we can certainly report the need date, if that's the board chooses.
I did, but I saw her start to.
I would just say five years out. I would, you know what I mean, for the one and two.
Okay, I'm not sure what the motion is.
Yes, no, I'm getting confused myself. It's getting rather late. I think Mrs. Egan's ready to leave those poor dogs.
Can I, yeah, no, can I, I have a question. So we spend all day or all evening talking about equity and diversity and equality and all that. And on here, I'm trying to get these renovates, right? The renovate addition for North Stafford High School, Fine Arts Way. I understand it said Fine Arts. That's things that every other school has, and this school doesn't. My question, may I ask, yeah, so.
We'll see how we answer it.
Yeah. So my question is, when that study was done?
Yes, ma'am.
I know we're not getting penalized, because it's a study, right?
Absolutely not. It was a study to identify the deficiencies. We did the study last year, and it was identified a few months after the CIP process initiated. So we didn't, it wasn't a candidate project, because the study hadn't been done. So we have that now. It identifies deficiencies to the fine arts program at North Stafford, relative to our current standards.
Can you repeat to me again what it said about the deficiency? There was no, what, equality?
Well, there's certainly a space, there were square foot deficiencies. Square foot deficiencies is a real generic term, but they certainly didn't have, I want to get this wrong, but I don't think they had a chorus room where, and three of our high schools.
An orchestra in our meeting, I believe.
Three of our high schools didn't have that particular room three years ago. So we've been able to, so they have two of the three rooms for the fine arts programs.
Okay, and I didn't see, I was looking for a cost to it.
That's correct. You did not see a cost.
We don't know the cost, because we don't know what year to.
If I.
Do I have a kind of a ballpark?
We do. I don't have it at my fingertips, but depending on the year, if it's in FY '25, it will be a certain amount. If it's in FY '28, it'll be more than that.
So it says need 2020. What was the amount?
The deficiency is today.
Right.
There is a deficiency today. So based on all these renovations and that particular project, the need is now. Now, whether we can afford it or not is the question at hand.
But if you have to build it today, what would it cost?
I have that in the study. Yes, ma'am. It's in the study. I can provide that to you.
Why don't we have that come back to us? That can be one of the information that you want to come back. I don't see we're going to be able to reach any conclusion this evening, other than constructing high school number six and constructing elementary school 18.
And Ms. Healy, if I could just say, I would be very cautious of the board changing anything with the date on the high school six. In FY '22, we have $5.1 million already allocated, then 43 million, then 62, then 28, then 1.3, I guess, for closeout. If we move that date, I believe that will shift.
But is the year open? Does that change it?
No, but what I'm saying is, there's already a plan in place based on the schedule there. I do not believe the initial enrollment figures that I have seen to date have caused me to change my mind about the high school and its need date.
So are you?
I guess what I'm saying is, that will still open up for 2026.
I'm just saying, this has been in there, if we move out a date, I think.
Probably move out, but if you keep the date.
Keeping the date, that's why I'm arguing with you. How about this, how about a substitute in this way? Motion to send high school number six and elementary school 18 as the two initial priorities of the school board. The school board is in the process of examining an additional eight projects to determine their, okay, and that's where the word.
Minority, where they fall as a priority.
How about, does that?
Well, I don't know if I'd call these the initial priorities. I would call these as the current priorities.
Current, okay.
Because if we say initial, then it may be interpreted that it's subject to change, which we don't want that.
Okay, I was trying to write something that we could get.
But I do think we need to address this again soon. If you think we can have the information for the next meeting? Oh, my goodness.
And 3R infrastructure project list will get moved to next meeting as well.
That's right. The only thing that would be going over here is construct high school number six and construct elementary school number 18. And do we want to put, I think we have to put the year to open. I mean, the need date is almost irrelevant if we're not going to say it's going to open when we need it.
Do we know when they need it? Do you know?
Well, then you have to, you have to keep those dates there, because those are the dates that.
That is needed.
Well, I think, I think we report it as a need date, and if it's not affordable, then they'll come back and say it's not affordable. I mean, if we say a need date and an open date, I mean, that's settling. If we want to settle, that's okay, if we can do it. But if we need it earlier, then we should ask for it earlier.
Right.
We will take the funding for it close to that date. Mr. Heran will know that.
So is that clear as mud? Is that acceptable, Ms. Decatur?
Yes.
All right, so we all know we're voting for to send a list with two items, both with the open date. Will the open date be 2025 for the high school? Is that what you want?
So what we're doing is a motion to send the large capital project list with high school number six and elementary school number 18 as the priorities, with the dates currently listed to the board, with the understanding that we're in the process of examining an additional eight projects of examining an additional eight projects to be prioritized and sent within, how many days?